Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, October 28th, 2003. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Labange, Leddo, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villarosa, Weiss, Sign, Padilla, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, let me ask Mr. Dudlow to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could ask everyone in the chambers to please stand, face the flag, place your hand over the heart, repeat after, or follow with me. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
...of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The, uh, the repeat after me comes from Little League baseball. You'd say, "I trust in God," and so forth and so on.
A little bit of trivia. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Villarosa moves, and Mr. Park seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Cardenas moves, and Mr. Smith seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items that have been requested to be continued. Item number one, the applicant consents to a continuance to November 5th.
Members request to continue item number one to November 5th. Seeing no objection, item one is continued.
And also on the agenda, item number two, the Bureau of Street Lighting has requested that matter be continued to December 17th, and for council to open the hearing today and close the public hearing if there are no speakers.
Okay. Members, item number two now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. We shall therefore open and close the public hearings and continue the matter to December 17th. Next item.
There's also request on one of the closed session items, item number 33, to continue that matter to November 5th.
Okay. Members request to continue item 33, also without objection.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, item number three is a special presentation, and I believe that will be taking place at 11:30.
At 11:30 a.m., colleagues, a reminder that today we have agendized a special presentation by Chief of Police, William Bratton. Just so happens that this is one-year anniversary as chief. We'll hold that on the desk till 11:30.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items four through six, items four and five are confirmations of commissioners. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let's hold commissioner confirmations temporarily on the desk. We'll dispense with consent to items and return to items four and five as the first items to consider today. Leaving item number six before us, public hearing has been held on item number six. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Any member wishing to call item six special? Seeing none, let's open the roll on item number six, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items seven through 29, and 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Without objection, items seven through 29 will be considered by the City Council today. Members, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on items seven through 29. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Members wishing to call any specials, Mr. Reyes.
Number 19, please.
19 called special by Mr. Reyes. Any other specials? Items seven through 29? If not, let's, uh, hold items seven and eight temporarily on the desk. Those are ordinances, and we do expect 12 members today. On items nine through 29, with the exception of 19, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
The next items, Mr. President, are the closed session items, items 30 through 34, with the exception of 33, which has already been continued.
Let's ho, let's hold all closed session items on the desk. Let's also welcome Ms. Han to chambers, bringing us to 12 members. We can now entertain items seven and eight. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on items seven and eight. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
The next items, Mr. President, would be the commissioners. Item number four is confirmation of Mr. Larkin, Arnold, to the Board of Zoo Commissioners.
Okay. Mr. Arnold, can please come forward to the table. Colleagues, public hearing has been held on item number four. We do have a committee report recommending the confirmation of Mr. Arnold to the Zoo Commission. Are there members of the council wishing to be heard on item number four at this time? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your service. Forthwith on item number four, please. Next item, please.
Item number five is confirmation of Ms. Barbara Hinton to the Commission on Disability, and a committee report recommends approval.
Okay. Members, item number five now before us, and again, we have a committee report recommending confirmation. Are there any members wishing to be heard? Any members wishing to be heard on item number five? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
See, now wasn't that easy?
Thank you so much.
Thank you for serving this city. Forthwith on item number five, please. Next item.
Item number 19 was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, item 19.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, it's a rise to speak to this item in that it's a, an example of how we are able to treasure those structures, those, uh, architectural gems that we have in our district, in our city. In this case, this particular area, we have structures from the turn of the century all the way up to 1930s around the, what was once known as the Beverly Hills of Los Angeles 100 years ago. And these structures still remain in place. We've been trying our best to bring them back to life, and they have literally great examples of how prestigious these areas once were. The great thing today is that you still have families living there, you still have communities, you still have people investing time and money into these structures, and they truly care about the history of Los Angeles. So I just want to rise to, uh, want to speak to that particular subject matter, because I know we all have our own gems in our own districts, and we can hope that we can continue finding ways to protect them, and I encourage an aye vote. This area, this particular overlay zone, ICO will cover the residential units, residential zones, it won't apply to the commercial, so the commercial areas continue to change and evolve based on the supply and demand issues of those particular areas. So, uh, thank you very much, and, uh, should it pass, forthwith, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, and thank you for your hard work on this issue. Seeing nobody else wishing to be heard, Madam Clerk, feel open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved. If we can go forthwith on that, please. Next item, please.
Uh, Mr. President, I believe there's a request to take up the closed session items now, uh, because inasmuch as the agenda is completed, except for the closed sessions.
Okay. We, I know we have one other item on the table, but, uh, because of a time delay on that, why don't we take up the closed session items next? If I can ask the, uh, guards help in clearing the room for closed session, and I want to thank everybody for coming in. We'll be, uh, opening ourselves back up, um, around 11:30, if all works out, to hear a report from the Chief of Police. Um, and until then, we will be in closed session. Madam Clerk, if we can take up the items from closed session to approve now an open session.
Yes, Mr. President. Item number 34, there was a request to continue that matter to, uh, for one, well, to November 5th, and that was a unanimous vote on that one.
Okay. Without objection, item 34 will be continued till November 5th.
Item number 30 is settlement in the case of Roberto Sanchez versus City of Los Angeles, and that's a workers' comp case in the amount of $116,725.
Okay. Uh, open the roll on that. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay. That is approved in open session as well.
Uh, item number 31 is also workers' comp case, and that's in the case of Gadera versus City of Los Angeles, and that's in the amount of $125,000 plus 3,000 burial expenses.
Okay. If you can open the roll on that, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That item is approved as well.
And item number 32 is approval of outside counsel and, uh, transfer $50,000 from the unappropriated balance.
Okay. If we can open the roll on that, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved as well. Okay, colleagues?
Now, Mr. President, uh, council still has public comment on the desk if there are any cards for public comment.
Now it's time for public comment, but seeing no public comment cards, public comment is open and closed.
And item number three is still on the desk.
Item three is still on the desk. Colleagues, we can either wait here in council, or we can recess till 11:30. What is the, the body's wish? People like to stay here?
So, and item number three is a report from our Chief of Police on a motion that you all approve related to the state of crime in Los Angeles, and the Police Department has, uh, come in and set up a program. The Chief of Police will be addressing, uh, with the mayor at 11 o'clock on the facts related to the fires in the Southland. I would very much like us to, uh, be able to regather here in recess and listen to the Chief of Police and gain insight from what his vision is, and also share what we believe. So I'd like to just ask that we recess until, uh, 11:40.
Okay.
11:30.
11:30. Mr. Labange has asked that we recess until 11:30, colleagues. Is there any objection to that?
Anybody can't be here, anybody have a chamber luncheon they gotta go to?
Anybody wishing to be heard otherwise? If not, we will then recess until 11:30, colleagues. Please be prompt, and we will, uh, hear from the Chief of Police then at 11:30. Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. We have been in recess for the past 50 minutes approximately. Uh, we have 10 members present, again, in council chambers, constituting a quorum. Let's welcome Chief Bratton from the Los Angeles Police Department, and he'll introduce who's with him. Uh, colleagues, we have remaining on the desk, item three from today's agenda, uh, which is a presentation by the Chief of Police relative to crime. a presentation by the Chief of Police relative to crime throughout the city, public safety strategies, deployment of resources, and other related matters. Is Mr. Labonge here? Okay, this presentation is a result of a motion brought forward by Councilmember Labonge and approved by the council in its entirety. Unless there's an objection, I think what we'd like to do is begin with a brief comment by Mr. Labonge and a brief comment by Councilmember Miskowski, the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, and then proceed to the substantive presentation by the chief and questions and answers to follow. So, Mr. Labonge?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, it's a very critical day in Los Angeles, and this is a critical day for our residents. I've asked for this special meeting on the state of crime in Los Angeles because I believe that public safety is the number-one issue in this City Council. Public safety is the number-one issue in all of our districts and in each of our neighborhoods. I want to thank each and every one of my colleagues here on the council. Chief Bratton, I want to thank you and the Police Commission for this special meeting today. Since I was born fifty years ago in Los Angeles, over twenty-five thousand people have died at the hands of another in this city. That's a tragic statistic. And even though the homicide rate has declined this year, even one homicide is unacceptable. So we're here today to learn firsthand from Chief Bratton about the LAPD's strategies to fight crime and what changes he's making to improve public safety. And you know, at this hour, in this city of four million people, there are fewer than three hundred patrol officers on duty. These officers are assigned to cover more than seven thousand miles of city streets, a city of over four hundred and seventy square miles. Do the math, that means one officer for every thirteen thousand and seven hundred people. The total number of LAPD officers and the sworn officers is nine thousand three hundred. That's a ratio of one officer per every four hundred and eight people. In New York, it's one per two-seventeen. In Chicago, it's one per two-fifteen. And in Philadelphia, it's one per two-seventeen. The LAPD has always had to do more with less. Our Police Department has historically employed an aggressive style of policing because it was the only tool in the toolbox. But that era is over. The LAPD of today is more about building trust and respect in the community, restoring the Senior Lead Officer Program, reviving police advisory boards. These have helped improve the relationship between the Los Angeles Police Department and the people that it serves. The other changes, of course, is how we can strengthen the LAPD when we're operating in a very tough fiscal time. I look forward to hearing from Chief Bratton about his take on this challenge. And members like you, I have my own thoughts. In the nearly thirty years that I have worked for this city, the council has never found a way to permanently increase the number of officers to a level that we all agree would be ideal. And even with the current budget situation, we need to prioritize our spending to make this happen. For starters, I hope this council finds a way to take advantage of the federal program COPS Universal Hiring Award. This would add two-hundred-and-seventy-eight new officers over the next three years. Also, Chief, I hope we can civilianize more LAPD's administrative functions to free up officers and put them in our neighborhoods. And council, we must review the six-hundred sworn vacancies that are frozen now and try to find a way to unfreeze them to help this department. Another common sense solution is for the LAPD to partner more effectively with our departments, all of our city and departments, to enforce the laws. And just recently, the car seizure law that I originate is an excellent example of how it could work well, when different city departments work together, shoulder to shoulder, with the city attorney on issues related to prostitution, working on illegal dumping with our Public Works Department, working to combat street racing with our Department of Transportation and LAPD Motors. Chief, I want to thank you. I truly want to thank you for coming here today with you and your staff. I know we all share the commitment that we want to make the mission of Los Angeles the safest big city in America. I look forward to your remarks, and I want to thank all the officers who help support this city and serve it as we do. Thank you.
Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, let me thank Mr. Labonge and you, Council President, for allowing this kind of special presentation. Members, we know we have motions introduced every day, committees meet every day, and we respond to issues every day. But sometimes, as a consequence of that, we lose the big picture, and we lose the overview. And today isn't meant to supersede any of that, but it's meant to be a focus. Where are we, where are we going? What are the issues that we deal with in those motions and in committees? Where is that leading us, and where are we going? I think the chief and the department have prepared a presentation for us today to give us that perspective. This was particularly motivated, I think, by Mr. Labonge's motion about issues that we keep circling around, keep trying to get an answer about, and that is deployment, fairness, effectiveness, what tools are there in the department? What are those tools, and how are we utilizing them today? And what new tools are where, and how shall we utilize them differently in the future? We have focused an awful lot on community policing. The question is, where is that measure? How do we measure it? We have focused on where we know we had a problem in the past, recruitment. How could we even do the job despite the numbers that Mr. Labonge read, when our numbers were falling? As the numbers are growing now, how can we use them most effectively? How can we assure those communities? We can look at broad numbers, thousands over a long period of time of homicides, but the impact is the one homicide, the one homicide in our neighborhood, the two or three gang dealers, where a community knows there are problems, where kids can't walk to school, where they get accosted. Those bring it down to our neighborhood levels. Those are the issues that the chief and the department are going to be addressing today, not just statistics, but what are we doing? Where is, where are we on reorganization? Where are we in looking forward? So I appreciate this. As I said, I sent a letter around earlier that every week, the Public Safety Committee meets and deals with these issues on an update report basis. But this gives us that framework from where we go from here, to look at the motions that are in council and to address those issues, to bring back in much more detail the kinds of directions, the kinds of questions, the kinds of concerns that the council will have after interacting with the chief today, so that public safety can bring this back. And as Mr. Labonge said, we're going to hear, it's all about the number of officers and how we most effectively use them, and how we can continue to increase that and continue their effectiveness with that all-important other partner, which is our community, our community people, how they are out there, where and if, and how that is changing, and how we can more effectively use them as part of this tool and mechanism we have today. So Chief, I think we're ready for your presentation, and I thank the council for your attention we're giving to this.
Chief. Well, I want to thank, Mr. President, thank you and the council for the opportunity to meet with you this morning. We have a PowerPoint presentation that will take approximately one-half hour, then we will be available for your questions. A special thanks to Councilmember Labonge and Cindy Miskowski for the opportunity to appear before all of you today. I'd like to talk to you today, and I'm joined by Assistant Chief Jim McDonald, Chief of Operations for the department, talk to you about the real LAPD and how we intend to move forward to try and meet Mayor Hahn's goal of making Los Angeles, both in perception and reality, the safest big city in America. And the department at this time does stand ready to move toward that goal and to meet that challenge. In terms of the Police Department itself, the LAPD is a product of its size and history within its environment. It is an immense city, you all know that, you cover very large areas. It has pockets of extreme violence. Too many of our residents that you represent for police and visitors are targeted by that violence. Oftentimes, that violence is driven by the gangs that this city is so well-known for. But when we think about Los Angeles, we really need to think about, how big are we? We are huge. There's a chart up on the board now that will give you some sense of it. Within the geographic confines of Los Angeles, approximately four hundred and seventy square miles, you could fit the cities of Milwaukee, San Francisco, Minneapolis, Pittsburgh, Cleveland, St. Louis, Boston, and the island of Manhattan, and still have quite a few square miles left over. The police forces assigned to those cities are approximately eighteen to twenty thousand, depending on what's going on in New York at any given day. We cover the same area with about ninety-three hundred at the current time. So when you think of this city, it is a huge environment. As was referenced by Councilmember Labonge, that per capita, that we do suffer in comparison to many of those sister cities. Four-point-eight per capita in New York, four-point-seven per capita in Chicago, four-point-six per capita in Philadelphia, two-point-three per capita here in Los Angeles. When we look at offices per square mile, and this is very important because when we talk about response time, when we talk about the ability of officers to get to know the people in their communities, Los Angeles has fewer offices per square mile than other major American cities. And the chart that's up on the board now clearly indicates that we have approximately nineteen-point-seven offices compared to a hundred-and-twenty-eight offices per square mile in New York. Chicago, sixty-two, Washington, D.C., fifty-nine, Philadelphia, fifty-five, Baltimore, forty-one, Detroit, thirty, and Los Angeles, nineteen-point-seven. But it's not just numbers that tell the story about a department and its potential effectiveness, it's also the culture. And in that regard, the department culture has many good aspects, but it also has a negative. Some of the best aspects of the department is that it is an organization that respects hard work. Members of this department, in terms of irrespective of the race, sex, of their partners, what they respect is the training, the dedication, the commitment to do the job and do it the right way. It is an organization that rightfully is very proud of its professionalism, and it is truly a leading organization in American policing and has been for most of its modern history in this area of professionalism. And its commitment to training is without equal. This organization, even pre-consent decree with its many mandates of training, was an organization that, because of its very small size, always, always focused a lot of attention and resources on ensuring that the officers were trained to the best of the department's ability to go into the streets, those oftentimes very dangerous streets, and prepare them tactically to deal with the many issues that they had to face in those streets. Culture of the LAPD also, though, has some bad aspects. Alienation from some communities, certainly that cannot be denied, cannot be refuted. You oftentimes hear it as you go to your community meetings, I certainly have heard it. I think the department is coming back, however, in this area. I have not had, in the year that I've been privileged to be Police Chief, and today is the one-year anniversary of my formal swearing-in, by coincidence. In that one year, including a meeting last night with Councilman Biragosa over in Hollenbeck, I've not had a hostile community meeting in all of the one-hundred meetings that I've attended in this past year. People in this city recognize that we, the police, particularly with our size, cannot do it alone, that they have to take some responsibility for working with us, for accepting some responsibility for some of the conditions in their neighborhoods. And I think there is a growing sense and understanding that there has to be a partnership, political, police, community. There have been, certainly, episodes of unjustified police violence throughout the history of this department. That's not a cultural problem unique to the Los Angeles Police Department. It is unfortunately an aspect of American policing and one that we must be constantly vigilant. And certainly, some of those acts of violence and rampant led to the federal consent decree, which we currently work under. There is also another aspect of the culture of this organization. I have never seen an organization that has so much bureaucracy. It is incredible. Even if you could get rid of all of the consent decree mandates, it is an extraordinarily complex organization that has rules and regulations against everything and very little for anything. And this is an issue that we're going to attempt to wrestle with and continually wrestle with, even within the even more confining rules and requirements of the consent decree. So what is the real LAPD? Now, Jim McDonald has oftentimes used the phrase that it's an organization capable of doing anything, but we are incapable of doing everything. And I think throughout so much of its history, the department has been expected to do everything. Well, we are just not capable of doing that. We are desirous of doing it, but the resources that we have to work with and the problems that we have to face just don't allow that reality. The real LAPD, the responsibilities that we face today, the three priorities are well-known to you, I have testified before you, I have certainly at many of the community meetings I have attended with you, we speak to these quite freely, and they are reflected in our budget requests. Certainly, number one in overriding is crime reduction, actual crime reduction and fear of crime. Secondly, counterterrorism, and you recently had a presentation by John Miller and his people as to the particular, unique aspects of this city that warrant this city applying extra resources to that issue. And thirdly, consent decree. The consent decree is a reality, we can't run away from it. Instead, I've chosen to run toward it, embrace it, get it done, and get on with our lives. And I'll speak to that a little further on in the presentation. So the three goals, crime reduction, counterterrorism, consent decree, those were the goals of the past year, they remain the goals in the budget presentations that we'll be submitting to you shortly. Let's start first about crime in the recent past. Between nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and two, crime in Los Angeles was up in every uniform crime report category, with homicides up nearly fifty-four percent. Recent past, between nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and two, other cities saw decreases in violent crime. Around the country, on the whole, decreases, certainly other cities like Los Angeles, however, were experiencing some increases. When in Newark, Baltimore, New Orleans, New York City, Chicago, Philadelphia, Detroit, all cities well-known for their crime problems were experiencing during the same time ours was going up, theirs was going down. Violent crime today, two thousand and two, two thousand and three comparison, well, fortunately, in all seven of the measured crime categories this year, we are showing improvements. Overall violent crime is down four-point-six percent. Leading the way, homicides down about twenty-three-point-seven percent as of October eleventh. Most recent figures that are not reflected in this PowerPoint indicate that around twenty-two percent decline. So good news, that the trend is now starting to go in the opposite direction. Property crime today, similar reductions, down about three-point-six percent, all categories. Overall crime today, violent crime is down four-point-six, property crime down three-point-six, Part One crime down three-point-nine. At the same time, and I think personally, this is what's driving a lot of the crime reduction, the cops are more active. They're back in the street, they're back in the street with new tactics, new strategies, and increased numbers, which I'll talk about in a few moments, and I think that's key to understand. With more police properly directed, I'm very confident that you get crime reductions. It's been my experience throughout my career. Total violent crime arrests are up four-point-three percent, all arrests up eleven-point-seven. Part Two, quality-of-life arrests, so-called broken windows, are up about thirteen-point-six percent. Particularly important, the arrest activities of the two entities that are focused primarily on gang crime, FES units, those are our street narcotics units, which are now paired up with our gang units, our gang intervention teams. Those two entities, when you look at their particular arrest numbers, oftentimes they're up over a hundred percent, a hundred-and-fifty percent, depending on the area of the city. Our detectors are also more active. Fifteen hundred detectors in the department were a significantly underutilized, poorly-focused entity within the organization, and it was a resource that we need to take more advantage of, highly trained, highly dedicated, but inappropriately focused and assigned. Department-wide Part One crime clearances continue to improve, with the best improvement occurring in homicide clearances, sixty-six percent year-to-date compared to fifty-eight percent last year. Speaking of homicides, that we need to understand that not only are homicides down dramatically, but also victims of shootings are down dramatically. This is important because we are focusing our detectors not only on responding to homicides, but also to shooting scenes, where there are shooting victims, so we can initiate the investigation of those incidents very quickly. Second area of concentration is counterterrorism. In the recent past, as Councilmember Jack Weiss has repeatedly pointed out, that we were really not as prepared as we could be, and more needed to be done. And a prioritization during my time, my year as Police Chief, has certainly been in that area. Just to refresh your memories, we have approximately six-hundred-five identified high-risk locations for protection in the city. The city of L.A. contains eighty-five percent of the state of California's high-risk locations. And this year, the bomb squad has responded to over eleven-hundred-fifty-one calls to date this year. Twenty-five percent of these involve live explosives, ranging from fireworks on up to actual explosive devices. The consent decree, the recent- The consent decree, the recent past, the groundwork was not yet completed. We have increased the focus on that over the past year. Consent decree today, a comment from the monitor. Overall, we are pleased with the LAPD's efforts in reaching compliance from an August fifteen, two thousand and three report, but the monitor, as they are paid to do, has also been very critical of other areas where they feel a lot more needs to be done, and a lot more does need to be done, but we are committed to doing it. The LAPD is now, however, positioned to achieve substantial compliance by June fifteen, two thousand and four, and the performance improves every day. Substantial compliance is ninety-four percent across-the-board compliance. That is a phenomenal hurdle to achieve, but it is what it is, and that's the goal that we're going to have to achieve to get into compliance. But we still have a long way to go. Some requirements for gang officers and gang units are not yet in compliance, we're still having issues there. We've been slow in complying with provisions related to the department's conduct with the mentally ill. Now, in terms of the real LAPD, where we intend to be tomorrow, we've talked about the past, we've talked about today, tomorrow, we're going to be delivering improved and dramatic effectiveness, we're going to be achieving much greater efficiency, and we're going to be much better at assessing and securing, assessing our real needs and securing the resources necessary to meet those needs, both internally with existing resources, as well as certainly, as you're fully appreciative of lobbying to the best of our ability to assist you in making choices as to what to do with the very scarce resources that we'll have to work with in the future. I'd like to go back to crime reduction for a moment. Combating crime still is and will remain the number one priority moving forward. To assist that, that we have facilitated by the CompStat process, a process that here in Los Angeles was initiated by Farmer Chief Parks called Fast Track. And it's based on four areas of concentration, timely, accurate intelligence, rapid deployment of officers, particularly important in a city like Los Angeles with so few resources, effective tactics, and relentless follow-up and assessment. A number of you at my invitation have attended CompStat sessions. Good news is that that process is working. Additionally, also during Farmer Chief Parks' tenure, the COPS grant was sought for two million dollars to give this department the most modern state-of-the-art computer system in the country for implementing CompStat. That CompStat grant, we're working very actively on putting that into shape, working with the COPS office in Washington, and I hope it will be coming before you shortly. That two million dollar grant will provide state-of-the-art computer systems that will significantly assist us, particularly with such scarce resources, in the assignment of those offices in a timely fashion. Detective reorganization, controversial within the department, a lot of detectives don't want to be reassigned to nights and weekends, understandably. If we could all work Monday to Friday, nine to five, wouldn't that be great? But that's not the reality of policing. So over the last several months, we've been moving hundreds of detectives to where they need to be, and where they need to be is where the crime is occurring, when it's occurring. So that the expansion of detectives assigned to work nights and weekends has been underway and will continue. It improves work processes to eliminate paper shuffles, we've put filing teams together in cooperation with the district attorney, which are proving to be very effective, and reducing the amount of personnel necessary to present criminal filings. It is ensuring a quicker response by investigators to crime scenes in order to begin immediate investigations and free up patrol resources. Let me speak to this point for just a moment. In everything I do, I try to get multiple benefits. Going to many crime scenes early on during my time and requiring my deputy chiefs, my captains, sometimes the command staff outnumbered police officers on the scenes of these homicides and shootings, and oftentimes, we're there as quickly as those officers. It became very apparent that we had several issues to address. One, the large number of officers who are at these scenes. Two, the fact that detectives oftentimes who are responsible for controlling the crime scenes would not arrive at the scene till several hours after the fact. One night, I was at a homicide scene where it took the responding detective three and a half hours to get to the scene. Meanwhile, we had a significant number of uniformed officers tied up who would normally be directed by those detectives. So by getting detectives to the scene more quickly, one, we begin the investigation, we identify witnesses more quickly, we're able to begin the process of solving the crime more quickly. But secondly, we get our uniformed resources back into the field to go after nine-one-one calls, to go after potential suspects. So we get the benefit of quicker crime response, hopefully quicker crime solution. We also get the benefit of improved nine-one-one response because uniformed officers, scarce officers, are not just standing at the crime scene, they're back working in the field. So all of this is intended to enhance our opportunity to reduce response time, reduce crime, and increase arrests. In talking about the real LAPD tomorrow, we're going to attempt to achieve greater efficiency by reevaluating administrative positions, something that the council continually focuses on, reevaluating specialized units, do we need all that we have? This is an organization that is overly specialized, there are too many specialized units, and in tight fiscal times with scarce resources, we're going to have to revisit many of those entities to see, with our three priorities, do those entities need to continue in their current state. We're going to, through a computerized process that has already begun, attempt to dramatically reduce the paperwork that consumes a phenomenal amount of the time of our trained detectives and uniformed officers and civilian staff, as well as a review of all the rules and procedures of the department. Oftentimes, those rules and procedures appropriate at another time and era, but impediments in this day and age. In the issue of reevaluating administrative positions, that we need to assess and secure our real needs. LAPD currently has five hundred ninety civilian vacancies. Approximately fifty of those vacancies are staffed by full-time police officers because those positions are essential. Significant number of other police officers spend large amounts of their time doing functions that civilians would more appropriately do. So the reality of not having sufficient civilian staffing, and the number of civilians has declined in the department even as the number of police officers has increased, civilians are every bit as important as uniformed police officers. But we have a tendency here in Los Angeles, along with the rest of the country, to discount somehow or another their importance. Their benefit cannot be underestimated. They generally cost less than police officers, and usually will free up police officers for more important assignments. Or, in the case of specialists, particularly forensic specialists, DNA, ballistics personnel, they fulfill essential functions to allow our detectives in particular to solve crimes more quickly. LAPD must have appropriate technology to support the officers we have. To that end, we're going to benefit from a new crime lab opening up in two thousand and six. The council has approved a number of unfreezes to allow us to hire additional technicians, DNA, and ballistics experts, which will help us significantly in trying to support our detective operations. The historical overview of the sworn personnel currently, two thousand and three, we're at ninety-three oh seven. That's a substantial improvement over the last several years, and I think that, I've already referenced, that with additional police officers appropriately assigned, I think the benefit you will find will be reduced crime. And that has certainly been the case with more officers, we've been able to use them more appropriately. The civilian staffing, however, is a problem area. As you can see, the decline in civilian staffing from two thousand and two to two thousand and three continues, it is a significant impediment to what we need to do. In summary, in terms of the past year, crime is down. Recruitment and retention are up, and the irony of as we look forward to the next year or the next several years of very tight budgets, the improvements of the last several years may be impeded by the issues that we're all going to have to face. Arrests and productivity are up and continue each month increasing. And I really believe our relationships with the various communities throughout the city continues to improve, as reflected by the many community meetings that I've attended, and I really do believe that we've turned a corner on those relationships. What is our shared responsibility? Well, making LA the safest big city in America, the mayor's goal is certainly the goal of the police department, and I believe a shared goal of the members of this council. To do it, we all have to basically accept mutual accountability and responsibility for it, commitment to every community, which we are making, and securing essential resources, even in the face of very tight fiscal budgets, to do the best we can with what we have. And finally, in opening up to your questions, the real LAPD. It's an organization where we're using a motto that doing better is not good enough. We have been doing better, in some instances, much better, in other areas, a little better, in some areas, unfortunately, not better. But doing better is not going to be good enough for us. And my own sense is, where we are is not where we need to be. While it's been a good year, overall, that where we are is not where I want to be in terms of overall crime reduction, department efficiencies, organizational structure, so those efforts will continue into the new year. But as I look into the new year, it is my sense, my belief, that with the organization, with its current staffing, that we can continue to have positive impact, but the ability to maintain consistency throughout the city is impeded by the sheer fact of the numbers we have to work with. In many respects, the LAPD functions as a fire department, that we respond to the most recent conflagration, get in, put it out, and then we have to run off to the next fire. Meanwhile, oftentimes, the fire that we have just left flares back up again, and we go back. And so the personnel situation offers a significant impediment. But we will work with what we have. I think we have capacity to do better with what we have, and we are committed to doing that. I think we have shown over the past year that we are capable of doing better, and the men and women of the department, I think, in response to the new discipline system, compressed work schedule, the new contract that was just negotiated, have begun to deliver in terms of improved sick time, certainly improved officer activity, and maybe most importantly, improved relationships with the various communities that we police. And with that foundation, I think we can do a lot more. But at the same time, I think we always have to stay realistic, that you can only do so much with what you have, and right now, that with the size of this department, the ability to predict with certainty significant advancements next year, I think we're really going to have to wait and see what we have to work with as we move forward. But we are committed to trying to do as much as we can with what we have, and we appreciate your support and your guidance. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Turning now to council discussion, let me recognize Councilmember Zine, to be followed by Mr. Smith and Ms. Sikowsky. And Ms. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, I appreciate the presentation, and I know your dedication to the people of Los Angeles and the wonderful success that has transpired during this, what appears to be a very short twelve-month period of time. Question I have regarding processing of arrestsees, the booking process, and following up with the court process, has there been anything done, I know we're trying to go to regionalized jails within the city of Los Angeles, any movement in the area expediting that process or somehow getting some cooperation with the courts? As we know, many officers are subpoenaed to court, it drains a lot of overtime, they don't testify, using those personnel for something different than sitting or on-call for two hours or for the rest of the day? You didn't discuss anything in that arena. Has there been any inroads into the booking process, expediting, and also the process? And I have a couple other questions, if you can hold my time, please.
The council has recently approved requests for allowing the department to fill vacancies for jailers, for personnel who support the arrest processing. So we recently graduated the new class of jailers, which will significantly assist some of that processing effort. Chief Popper, at my direction, is currently, and also in response to many concerns expressed by officers and some concerns expressed by members of the council, is doing a full review of the whole process to make a determination as to other efficiencies that we may be able to engage in. As I reported, arrests are up significantly this year, we anticipate that that trend will continue next year, puts added burdens on us. We have had a number of discussions with the city attorney, district attorney, relative to their needs and their issues as to what they require to move cases forward. So this is an area, I think, that we can make significant enhancements to the existing process.
Thank you. And I know that the luncheon yesterday, the Medal of Valor luncheon, where seventeen officers received the Medal of Valor for their heroic actions, and your presentation yesterday, and that videotape that was displayed yesterday, showing where the LAPD is moving into this new arena with the public participation and with the dedication of the men and women of the police department, I thought that was tremendous and happy to see that. And wherever that displays, I know it gives a good attitude and a good perception. LAPD's always had a philosophy, at least in my thirty-five years with the organization, more with less. And that philosophy of more with less, you get to the point where there's nothing less to take, I mean, it's all gone. Your constraints regarding dollars, the risk management situation, the dollars that go out to that, a tremendous task for you and your administration to deal with the organization, and as you mentioned, bureaucracy beyond imagination, to streamline that. This body, other than giving dollars for additional personnel, additional resources, I know they want to move Parker Center, which is a tune of millions of dollars, can you explain briefly what else we can do in the capacity of the policymakers of the city to give you the tools to empower the members of the organization to do what they need to do as we want this to be the safest city in America?
Well, that's a fairly easy one, it continues to do what you do, which is stay focused on this issue, and you, like myself, spend a great amount of time in your respective communities, you hear from them, and, you know, you attempt to the best of your ability to respond to those needs. So I would hope that we continue to have open dialogue and discussion, agree to disagree sometimes, but most instances, agree on what needs to be done. I think we're all recognizing that we're going into some uncharted waters next year with the budget situation. I hope the focus of my presentation is clear, that we will work with what we have. I will certainly, to the best of my ability, seek to make the case for your consideration of what we could use as you make budget decisions, but whatever we have to work with, the men and women of this department are committed to trying to do more with what we have.
And just one more closing comment. Councilmember Smith and I, yesterday, last evening, were up in the fire area in the northern part of the West San Fernando Valley, and tremendous outpouring of support from the members of the LAPD, Metro was there, Motors were there, the different divisions that were mobilized, the command posts that were established, supporting the firefighters that they were doing. So my compliments to all of the operations that were taking place, and I don't know if they're still in operation now, but they were up there doing evacuations, and hats off to the LAPD for being there alongside with our LA City firefighters who were protecting life and property in that northwest San Fernando Valley. They say the honeymoon's a short honeymoon. I hope this honeymoon continues with the positive that we've seen so far and continue with that. Thank you, Jim.
It'll have to continue, I don't think we've consummated it yet, so we'll keep it going forward.
Mr. Smith, followed by Mr. Reyes, Mr. Ludlow, and then Ms. Sikowsky for a second time.
Well, first of all, Chief, and for members of the council, I was just at a press conference with the chief and the fire chief, and I want to publicly commend, for all those watching, the LAPD and LAFD for the tremendous work they did. All my years with this city, I think it's the most coordinated effort I've ever seen of police and fire actually working in concert to help the people of the valley, and particularly my area, Porter Ranch and Chasworth. So, again, Chief, congratulations on a fine job last night, and it continues today. Thank you. I have a couple questions I want to ask you, dealing with some of the things you said. First of all, over the years, the hiring civilian personnel within LAPD has always been problematic, but it seems to be getting worse. Could you explain to me, from your perspective, where's the glitch? Is it with our personnel department? Is it within LAPD? Or is it the council hiring freezes that have caused you to exasperate this problem? Where's the real glitch in this problem?
I think there are three issues. Attempting to get qualified personnel, we pay very well from nine-one-one personnel on up through technicians, forensic personnel, but attempting to get qualified personnel, even in a city as large as Los Angeles with a large labor pool, oftentimes is difficult. Secondly, and part of that issue is, because the city is so huge, that people that, for example, that live in the far reaches of the valley, if they understand they're going to have to come down to work at police headquarters, that becomes a distant center. For example, the two nine-one-one centers that we have will be opening shortly, the second one in the valley, that works wonderfully for us because we are able to attract people who live in the valley to staff that resource, so we get happier workers, plus we increase the pool of workers we can go after. I think certainly the current freeze and the bureaucracy that's required to try to fill vacancies is a process that all of us do not like. It drives us all crazy, the amount of paperwork, it slows the process down, and it, being quite frank with you, drives me absolutely crazy. But it is what it is, but if we could come to some type of meeting of the minds in terms of some way of trying to expedite that process, because what ends up happening, same thing when we lose qualified police candidates, if we drag it out for months with the uncertainty, can we hire this person, they're going to go someplace else. And so the back and forth of sending it over gets kicked back and back again, we lose people. So I think we've created, in our efforts to be fiscally conservative, we've created another set- another set of problems that would, an unintended consequence. So if anything, even as we move into even more tighter budget times, if there's some ability to resolve the hiring process, that we can expedite hiring, that would be of great assistance.
Thank you. I have one of those people that do not believe in hiring freezes. That's probably, in my opinion, the dumbest thing you can do when you have a problem, and that is to restrict your managers from dealing with the problem with hiring the freeze. So I'm glad you put that on the record, because I think it's something we need to take a strong look at. There's a proposal coming through Budget and Finance that will allow you, as a general manager, to opt to have complete control over hiring, but it means giving up some money, so it's something you'll have to consider. Secondly, technology. You mentioned technology and able to assist officers. I remember 11 years ago, when I came on the Department as a reserve, we were being promised this new MDT system, which we now have. It's basically a laptop computer. And one of the things we were promised in that package was the ability to begin report processing while you're transporting arrestees to jail or wherever, or just while you're out in the field doing a certain amount of paperwork that you could be doing on those computers, but it never happened. What happened to that program?
I'm actually going to let Chief McDonald speak to that, that he'd be more familiar with the historical aspects of it. I think we're still working, if I'm not mistaken, with the 95 or 96 Windows technology on our mobile data terminals, which is certainly problematic. At the same time, this city has made very significant financial commitments, in that we have two now fully operational 911 centers, redundant, state-of-the-art, without equal anywhere in the country. We have a new crime lab that will be coming onboard, 2006, shared facility with the sheriff. And that's good news, because Sheriff Bach and I have, over the last year, sought to significantly increase our cooperation and coordination. And you'll be hearing more about that in the months ahead, as we both face fiscal difficulties. So it's a, on the one hand, we've made a lot of progress. This city, this council, has voted significant resources, and we've made significant improvements. On the other hand, we still remain woefully inadequate in certain officer-friendly areas. And so, I'll let Chief McDonald have, he's got more of an intimacy with the history.
Yeah, thank you. And we had the understanding that that would be the case. When the project rolled out, the MDTs were installed, and as the chief mentioned, I believe it is Windows 95 technology. The lag time due to bureaucracy that it took to get the purchases made and the actual device installed in the cars, by the time that happened, the infrastructure necessary to be able to support that had also changed. So that there was kind of a mix-match there, as far as what we had versus what we needed. And we were told that, well, the next generation then will catch that. And in the short time, which is not a short time in the life of items like this, we're locked into doing things pretty much the way the prior generation did, although these are a substantial upgrade from what we had previously. We still have not got to that paperless, wireless reporting ability from the vehicle in the field.
Is it still out there somewhere?
It's very much out there. There are smaller departments around the country who successfully do it. And anything you have, and the scope that we have here in Los Angeles, again, that's a challenge on top of what others face around the country. But it is certainly doable with technology.
Okay. Finally, let me talk briefly about deployment. You mentioned that this department was bogged down, and I don't remember the exact word you used, but the amount of rules, regulations, and requirements. One of those rules and regulations, which is self-started, is, the concern I have is with the deployment policy, our deployment formula as it is. Do you think that hinders your ability to move people as you need, what comes up in your CompStat meetings, where you need people, your deployment formula? Does that lock you into an inability to respond to crime spikes or anything?
No, actually, we've got great flexibility in many respects. We operate on a 28-day deployment cycle, 13 times a year. We sit down and attempt to staff up 18 areas, patrol areas, with personnel that, as close as we can, meet what is called the 740 Plan, a plan that was developed back in the late 1980s, in which we attempt to put into place a plan that will supposedly allow us to respond within seven minutes to Priority One calls, or to, and to allow offices, on average, to have 40% free patrol time for directed types of activities. However, because of the size of the department, while that model sounds great on the surface, what ends up happening is area commanders, bureau chiefs, because we have so few people, start pulling people away from the piggy bank, which is the patrol resource. So anytime you see a bicycle officer, that's an officer that's been taken out of a black and white by the captain to go into that assignment. Many of the officers that you see on specialized assignments, if a captain decides he wants to increase his gang unit, captain decides he wants to increase specialized enforcement units, those personnel all come out of the piggy bank of the 740 car staffing plan. And that is one of the impacts of such a small department. So on deployment, I don't see myself as particularly hindered, more frustrated, because there's so little to deploy, that there is really no fat anywhere, either at the area level or the bureau level, to, as we were able to do in New York or Boston, for that matter, with higher staffing levels, deploy more personnel. Our issue is, we just don't have enough to deploy.
Okay. I'll come back to it in one second. I'll just ask one more question. Well, let me finish with that. In deployment, one of the things I think you talked about is the number of officers per square mile. When you look at districts like Ms. Sikowsky, Ms. Gruel, Ms. Zine, myself, Mr. Weiss, where you have very large districts geographically, the per-square-mile rule really hurts us considerably, because then your response time expands outward instead of inward. When you have a call across a division like my Devonshire Division, which is 65 square miles, if you don't have personnel in one part of it, the response time gets longer and longer and longer. And I've always been concerned about the deployment policy, because I think our deployment formula really penalizes those very large geographic districts by not having enough personnel to get to those very distant areas of the city. And so, could you please tell me how we can resolve that problem? Other than hiring more officers, was it the obvious, easy answer?
There is not a resolution to that. There is some Band-Aid approaches. One, I've already talked about the idea of using the detectors more appropriately nights, weekends, to get them to the crime scenes faster, to move uniformed officers back into patrol more quickly. One of the problems with a crime scene, when you have a lot of uniformed officers assigned to that crime scene, we start pulling other units from other areas, cross-area dispatching. We have several problems with that. One increases the response time, certainly, if an entity's coming from Devonshire and moving into the next area. But two, from a safety standpoint for our officers, they are now coming from an area into a new area, which they have no familiarity. They have no understanding what the gang situation is. Is this addressed? Been a recent crime scene? They have no idea of what they're getting into. So we compound the travel time by adding to the officer's potential danger when he finally gets there. So we are at CompStat now. We closely watch each cross-area dispatch. One of the ways I basically hold my captains accountable is, I don't want them playing cute on me, in the sense that if they don't watch their cross-area dispatching, they're just sucking up resources from all over the rest of the bureau, coming in to handle their calls. So we're looking very closely at that issue. But the issue of staffing, there is no easy resolution to response time, with the force the size it is at this common time. Give you a case in point, as a former commissioner of the Boston Police Department, 48 square miles, I would put out, on an average night in that city, 160 vehicles. City of Los Angeles has 168 car staffing plan for 470 square miles. You do the numbers. It's 160 in an area as big as the foothills. And right now, the foothills, what do you put out, do you mean about 15 cars if we're lucky?
That'd be a good night.
That'd be a good night. So there is no easy resolution to that one.
Thank you. My time has run out, so let me ask one question. I'll sit down. You mentioned you have a very rule-based organization, very hindered by the rules and regulations that are on you. If I said to you, "Chief, I can fix one rule today to make your life easier," what would you want us to resolve to make your life easier, as far as rules and regulations that have been placed upon you as chief?
Probably the one to fix, which will be fixed hopefully in 218 days, is the consent decree, in terms of, that's the big one.
Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Ludlow, Ms. Gruel, Mr. Weiss, Ms. Hahn, and then Ms. Sikowsky.
Thank you, Council President. Good to see you, Chief. Congratulations to you and your staff. I think you've done a great job with MacArthur Park. I wanted to make that point, because for so many years, we tried to create a focus there, and to actually have presence there. And the way it has been designed and developed has been very effective. Constituents there are very pleased, although we know we have a lot more work to do there. I was at your CompStat meeting the other week, and it was exciting to see the level of coordination, the orchestration that was going on, in terms of how resources are being used, how you leverage your various functions throughout your staff. And what struck me is that, it's the level of detail that you're able to engage, the questions being asked by the command staff there. But one thing that I did feel we would want to consider is the input from the senior lead officers, because of their interaction with the community folks. I know the captains do a great job, and they're covering many different areas. But because, as you eloquently stated, we are so understaffed, we're also spread out, how we are able to build up networks within communities, I think will add those eyes and ears to build up our cases, as we work with the city attorney's office, with the neighborhood prosecuting programs. So I think that's an area that we could build up on. But my question, to be specific, is, the other day, in Public Safety Committee, we were looking at the various programs we're funding. There's an $8 million package we're looking at for the, I think it's a Teams 2 program. And there, it is being designed within the RFP. We still have to go through a process of speaking to efficiencies, and how we look at systems, and how we look at communication. One of the questions I had, because we did get a report from your department regarding deployment, when I was asked, the question was asked, "How is deployment being used?" And one of the answers was, "We couldn't really give you a good, a clear answer, because we can't give you an answer, given the fact that we can't calculate the number of tourists coming in and out of an area." And what struck me there is that you do have a base level of information, because you have residencies, you have a population base, you have a clear understanding of the gang culture, you have a clear understanding of its complications with narcotics and the transactions, the subculture that goes there. So the notion of deployment, I thought, could have been better answered. But I wanted, my question to you is, how do we see this new investment that we're bringing into the department with these new programs, the connection between those efficiencies and deployment, and how we handle deployment, knowing that we're stretched as thin as we are?
The Teams 2 initiative really have no impact on deployment. It's a computer system that's designed for a totally different purpose. The deployment formulas that we currently operate under, by and large, to some degree, state-of-the-art. There is no best deployment formula anywhere in the country, that each city has its own set of issues, priorities. We've certainly got the issue in this city of gang crime, that a lot of cities don't have anywhere near the proportion of that type of problem. We are blessed that we have a tourism number that we have to be mindful of, certain areas of the city attract a lot more tourists than other areas. So the issue of deployment formulas of necessity, they need to have a core component to them, but they will vary from time to time, depending on crime rates going up and down, population changes. Certainly now, for example, the new goal line, we'll have to watch the impact of, will that be bringing larger numbers of people in from the Pasadena area, and as expands further into the Chinatown area, and down into the downtown area? So that's one of the changing elements of that deployment formula, as an example.
Just one last question. The ability to leverage, we already have funded in the city family, Community Development Department, Cultural Affairs Department, we have various departments that have programs that deal with interacting with youth, interacting with diversion. And so, as we continue to improve the level of participation by the officers, as it becomes stronger in their connection with the community leadership, I would hope that we can start getting to that level of orchestration, if you will. When we look at which dollars are being spent for which youth programs, art programs, you know, moral development, I mean, things that make places feel safer and cleaner. I think eventually, we can get there, if we have that level of coordination. So I'm assuming these new, like you were saying, these computerized levels of understanding what's happening, where we can start moving resources, with that understanding, we can take this whole level of intervention to a different place.
You've already mentioned, Councilmember, the satisfaction with what you've seen with the evolving CompStat process, which is building on the foundation of the Fast Track process that Chief Parks brought to the LAPD, and through his lobbying, we've got a $2 million COPS grant that we hope will take it to the, not just the next level, but the level beyond that. The city is attempting to emulate that with the City Stat process. So a lot of what you're talking about, the coordination that you were impressed with within the Police Department, the City Stat process that the mayor is putting into place to bring, much as I bring all my area commanders and bureau chiefs into CompStat, the mayor is bringing all of his department heads in to coordinate through City Stat the scarce resources that we all have, to make sure that we're maximizing the effect of those resources.
And I would just hope the council offices are given the opportunity to continue in that coordination, because I hate to find ourselves at odds ends when we're dealing with different priorities, so.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
One of the things I encourage the mayor to do, as we do at CompStat, is invite you to attend those meetings, and again, that'll just reinforce that those CompStat meetings are open to you at any time.
Mr. Ludlow, followed by Ms. Gruel, Mr. Weiss, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Cardenas, and Ms. Sikowsky.
Thanks, Mr. President. Chief, it's good to see you here. Thank you for this presentation, and definitely thank you to Councilmember Labanj and Councilmember Sikowsky for bringing this forward to today, and obviously, all the work that the Public Safety Committee's been doing over this past session. I wanted to take a minute to ask a few questions, but before I do that, I know others have mentioned it, but I wanted to take my opportunity to do it. You touched on a couple of things in your presentation that I actually just wanted to highlight, when you talked about how you feel the department is moving overall, and obviously, the consent decree, which was the backdrop for many of us in terms of where the department goes from here. But I just want to really commend, first of all, the leadership. You guys have done, I think, a phenomenal job in terms of your accessibility. And I don't say that just to sort of applaud you here publicly, but it is so important, as you know, Chief, that the community meetings that you've been attending to, the neighborhood association sessions that you've attended, these are all such an important facet of giving the public this sense of, as you've put it, a transparent department. So I really want to not only thank you, but encourage you to keep that up, because I think it's been a big piece of the success. You also mentioned the morale right now. I've alluded to that a couple of times. It's a two-part role here. One has been your leadership, and the other's been the partnership you've had with the Police Protective League and the men and women in the department. That is such a critical item relative to slowing the attrition rates of our officers here in the LAPD. So thank you for that. But you also mentioned some of the hotspots, areas that are challenges, that I wanted to just ask you a couple of questions. And President, if you could hold my time. Homicide's down, property crime's still high, even though you're showing a reduction. It's a slower reduction. With that, Pete, can you give me just a sense of your conclusions as to what may be happening in that arena, and what we, as a body, picking up on what Councilmember Smith said, what can we do here, as you look at your conclusions and the issues that you're seeing, as to why property crime reduction is moving slower than all the other areas?
Councilmember, I'm going to ask Jim McDonald, Chief of Operations, who runs the CompStat meetings, to specifically respond to that. That would be one of his areas of direct responsibility.
Now, we, the chief set some overall goals. We tried to get homicide down for the year 20%, and crime overall down 5%. And in doing that, we focused primarily on violent crime initially, trying to drive that down, because it impacts families most. As we did that, we saw pretty significant downturns in violent crime across the city. But not to be satisfied with that, we're looking for that overall bang-for-the-buck for crime, and the numbers of crime, the dramatic numbers, are in the property crimes. In the valley, for instance, auto theft was getting completely out of control. We focused and drilled down into resources to be able to address the auto theft problem, and had significant success in that. The burglary theft from vehicle, we looked at patterns, trends, and clusters, and deployed people accordingly, to be able to help drive that down. We also went out to community groups, and as part of an education campaign by area and by bureau, to be able to tell people what our concerns were, where the problems were, and suggestions to be able to deal with those things. So over time, we did start to see a pretty good downturn in property crime across the city, some areas more than others. Again, with the caveat that our main focus was, we got to knock down the homicides, the shootings, the gang activity, and then property crimes, unfortunately... shootings, the gang activity, and then property crimes unfortunately takes the second tier to that. Not to say it's not important, but you got to focus with limited resources where you can, and that's exactly what we did the past year.
No, and I would argue that I think that's the strategy that most of the people, when we are out there in community meetings, are hoping, how you're prioritizing them. You mentioned problems in the gang unit. Can you elaborate a little bit on what you can say publicly or the challenges that you're feeling right now? And I want to also take the moment to commend Chief Hillman, who I've had the opportunity to meet with on several occasions. He's been available, he's been accessible, he's been engaging. But as you look at it deeper, you mentioned it, can you elaborate a little bit on that?
I placed a very significant emphasis on the issue of gang crime during the past year. And a lot of the department reengineering has been intended to support our gang suppression intervention activities. And we have seen some pretty good results. Pretty good in that gang crime, violent crime, is actually down in larger proportions than the overall city violent crime trends. Number of gang homicides down more dramatically than homicides in general. At the same time, I'll be very frank with you that we are nowhere near where I'd like to be. I don't think that we, even with all the changes we've made in the past year, have really gotten a handle on this problem from the law enforcement standpoint. And I'm a strong believer that we are not the answer to this problem. We're a very significant causal intervener, but job creation, after-school activities for our youths, there's a whole range of other things that come into play here. But as to the police component of it, we've had two strategies. One, to get much more federal involvement in this issue. Federal recognition that the problem of gang crime is a national problem. And I'm very satisfied where we are one year after the fact that the national government, from the White House on down, is now beginning to focus on this issue. We will shortly after the first of the year be convening here in Los Angeles with the director of the FBI, approximately 12 to 15 chiefs of police from major cities around the country whose gang problems originally emanated from Los Angeles. And the FBI will be bringing in their sacks from those cities as part of a more coordinated focus on, and my belief, that problems in Los Angeles and Chicago are creating problems nationally. I met last week with the Attorney General in Philadelphia, one-on-one with him to speak to these issues. We have also, from the COPS office, recently received a $250,000 grant to hold two national executive meetings on the issue of gang violence. One will be held here in Los Angeles, the second will be held in Chicago. And the idea is to really take a more global look at this issue. Because while tactically, I think we have done much better, strategically, we're nowhere near where we need to be. My comment about where we are is not where we need to be. Gang crime is still, for me, a very vexing issue. We've made some good progress, we'll continue to make more progress, but I haven't found the Rosetta Stone yet.
And I'm going to be very quick, Mr. President, on these last two questions. And you pointed out in that last answer, a function which I think is a big part of our responsibilities at council, when you talk about after-school programs and jobs. So I think you guys are doing your side, we've got to our side. The last question really is on recruitment. We talked in the consent decree, I know we didn't get a chance to get into that, but can you talk just briefly about the success stories in our recruitment? I'm curious to know, how are we doing with the attendance and enrollment, I shouldn't say attendance, enrollment in our academy, diversity issues? I know there are issues with the, historical issues with the gender balance, how are we doing there? And then, as I wrap up, I know that this Friday, you're going to be rolling out some important information about efforts to increase the number of African-Americans in the police department, which I applaud the fact that you're getting in front of that and are trying to make a dent in it. But can you just address the issues? And then, since I'm leaving or sitting down, thank you again for being here, and this has been very, very helpful. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Recruitment over the last several years has improved dramatically, both in terms of funding authorization, which has allowed us to increase by over 300 the size of the department, a goal that the mayor has been committed to, that the council has been supportive of. I think the change circumstances within the department, things that normally you use as tools to attract candidates, a change in the discipline system that many officers felt was being inappropriately applied. But the reality is, it was a discipline system that had to be put into effect initially because there were many problems in the department. But secondly, the issue of a compressed work schedule. A report will be forthcoming to you, we're doing an analysis of that. My sense is that compressed work schedule has worked out quite well, both in terms of officer satisfaction morale as well as recruitment potential. For the first time, we are attracting candidates from other police departments who are coming into our academy in special classes. We only have to train them for six weeks rather than six months, and that trend could continue if we're able to keep our hiring going. On the representation side, we are hiring in proportion to populations, the Latino, Black, and Asian. However, in the Black, African-American recruitment efforts, I think we need to do much more. I really do. That when I look at a graduating recruit class of 40, 45, and I only have one or two African-Americans, we have a problem there. Understanding that the population in the city is only 11% to 12%, we still need to do much better there. And it's not just the department, it's political leadership, church leaders that I've been meeting with. We need to understand that we're not having any problem at all attracting candidates from other ethnic and minority groups, but from the Black community, we are having major issues attracting into this department. And it's not just in Los Angeles, by the way. This is a national issue that Noble, the Urban League, and we've met with the Urban League, John Mack, and the newly-elected president of the Urban League nationally on this issue. And it's something I think that African-American leadership, both locally and nationally, has to really get much more involved. Because otherwise, we're just creating a crisis farther down the line.
Ms. Grue.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Chief, for your presentation today, and Tom for, and Cindy for having this before us. Some of the questions I was going to ask have already been asked, so I won't repeat those, but I wanted to talk some specific issues relative to the San Fernando Valley. And I know Greg Smith asked a few of those questions as well. The other evening, Councilmember Cardenas and Councilmember Padilla and Councilmember Zine and Smith and I talked about the gang problem, particularly in the Northeast Valley, although it is also growing in the North Valley. And I had an opportunity, colleagues, to attend a ComStat meeting just about a month ago and was very impressed with the manner in which it was operated, the give and take from the captains that were present and the chief and some of your other high-ranking officers that were there. Because it held them accountable, but also was a, they were able to ask you, "How can we respond to some of these particularly high crime rates or high issues that are in the Northeast Valley?" And we talked about last week with our group about a potential gang summit, something to talk about, again, particularly in the valley because it is somewhat of a new phenomenon. It's been around for a while, but the increase in the numbers and, I guess, the fact that it is spreading out to other areas that we haven't seen before. So we will, I listened to the fact that we're going to have a particularly gang kind of conference here in the future. But I think in the Northeast Valley, we're particularly concerned as we see those lists every week of the crimes that have been committed and to see the increase as well. So just wanted to bring that up as an issue that we were particularly worried about in the San Fernando Valley and the Northeast Valley. You talked about the number of civilians that, in fact, the positions that you have not been able to fill, about 590, I think it was. What percentage of that, I don't know if you know, are being filled now with sworn officers?
We just did a quick survey, Chief Kascón, and this was a quick survey, that we identified about 50 officers who were filling positions that are civilian positions, for lack of a better term. But then you compound that with officers who a part of their day is spent doing things that civilians, whether clerical help or other expertise, are doing. And we have no idea at all about what type of impact that is having. Just to try and do that survey would be so labor-intensive. But suffice to say that civilian vacancies, which you have authorized, but we have, which we have not been authorized to fill, there's a reason why they've been authorized, because there's a need. And if we don't meet the need, and quite frankly, I have to go to where I have resources, the piggyback, and the piggyback is the uniformed officers. So as we look at it, there is a balance. Civilians, from my perspective, are every bit as important as police officers in the department. Because if I don't have them, I have to use the police officers.
So about 50. I know in Government Efficiency as well as in Personnel Committee, we've been having some of the discussion on where we can civilianize, again, some of those items that now may be filled by sworn officers, not just those that are vacancies, but additional, I guess, responsibilities that you all have taken on, but maybe would be done more effectively and expensively in another department, then we can put your officers back on the street. Because I think we all feel very strongly that the more sworn officers we can have on the street, not doing clerical, not doing other kinds of responsibilities we'd like to see. So we want to work with you and our Government Efficiency Committee as well. The other question I wanted to ask about was, there seems to be, in your statistics, a quality of life issues increasing, the homicides and others seem to be decreasing. Is there anything that we can do or that you find as a trend there that we need to address on those real basic quality of life issues?
Actually, I think you as a council are doing a great job in this area. That we have the prostitution problem, for example. Recently, Tom Labange was very involved in helping us move forward along with many of you, the ability to seize the vehicles of the Johns who solicit the prostitutes. And that's a tool that we've now used with the city attorney's office on a number of operations. You were involved recently in the new initiatives in the valley to deal with drag racing, which, again, in a similar fashion, let us seize those cars. And the only change I would recommend is that we not resell the cars, but we destroy them in a public spectacle that'll do more than anything to drive a stake into the heart of the drag racers. If they want to do that, go someplace else, you're going to lose them. So I think the council has been very, very supportive and, in fact, creative in working with us on those tools. I think the impact of some of those changes will take a little longer than some of the direct impact we're having on the more serious crime.
And one last thing, Mr. President, I know my time has expired, but I'll go real quick, I promise. One is, and on the street racing particularly, again, that was a wonderful partnership between the city attorney and the police department, and we have found that it's all but diminished in the valley because we did send that message, "We're going to take your vehicle." And lastly, on Greg's point about the valley and our geographic, you know, areas, and you've been in Foothill and we've talked about it up in the Sunland Dahunga area, the time it takes to get up there. And we're working on a potentially a drop-in center type of concept. But I think we do have some unique challenges in the San Fernando Valley and look forward to working with Chief Bergman and others to address that because we'd like to ensure that we have the same kind of response times in other parts of the city in the San Fernando Valley.
If I may, just a comment as you move forward next year on budgeting situations, that the quality of life that you speak to, that the city attorney's neighborhood prosecutor program is a phenomenal program, having those attorneys in our police facilities absolutely essential. And it's one of the best programs I've seen in my 30 years in the business.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom Labange, don't leave for just one second. I want to thank you, Mr. Labange, for putting this motion in, and as far as I'm concerned, you're two-for-two. Because last night, we held a meeting, Eric Garcetti got there, I was there, you were there with the West Hollywood City Council, because you want to change the way we meet. You want to change, you want to change us to have a more issues-based focus, to have a more regional focus. So in my book, you know, you had two home runs this week. Congratulations to you. And at this meeting we had last night with the West Hollywood City Council, I'll just let both of you know, Chief Branton and Chief McDonald, Captain Downing was there from Hollywood. And I know you think highly of him, you would have been so proud of the way he handled himself because he knows the problems up and down the Sunset Strip, whether it's the city of LA or the city of West Hollywood like the back of his hand. And he's an incredible resource for them and for the Sheriff's Department that he's developed a really close relationship with. It's a very, it's a very proud feeling to be there with such a fine representative of the LAPD. I want to turn my attention, Chief, to an issue that you know I care a lot about, which is protecting the city from the new threat of terrorism. And you know, as well as I, that it is extraordinarily difficult, if not outright impossible, to secure actual new funding at the local level to do anti-terrorism work. You and the, your talented and dapper assistant there, Mr. Miller, he knew that was coming when he heard the word "dapper," are doing a fine job. In terms of getting resources, this is a very tough place to turn. I have been very disappointed over the last two years at the Bush administration, which has talked a terrific game on terrorism, but hasn't provided actual new dollars for our major cities. Your former city, New York, Senator Clinton and Senator Schumer have made very clear that they've been shafted. We've been shafted here too. Only about $50 million to $70 million is in the pipeline for Los Angeles. Only about $1 million in new federal money has literally hit Los Angeles's books. It's an outrage. I'm wondering what your thoughts are in the coming weeks and months about getting new, actual new federal money to prepare the city, not just the department, but the whole city for the new threat of terrorism? If you could hold my time, please.
I think we're all very frustrated with the, both the slow pace as well as the amount of resources coming forward from the federal government. At the same time, I think we should feel very good about the relationships that we've been able to establish with the entities that control those decisions. As recently as last week, I was back in Philadelphia for the chief's conference, met with several of the highest-ranking officials in the Office of Homeland Security. They indicated that an initiative that Mr. Miller had put forward, that will serve as a prototype for the rest of the country, they're going to fund that to the tune of maybe $3 million. That was a discretionary grant. I think that we are moving quickly into a most favored nation status with federal counterparts. They, one, they're impressed with the close coordination between the city and the county, myself and Sheriff Barker. As you understand, with the other intimacy with this issue, they like doing things where they feel they can have maximum bang for the buck. So our regional approach to this, including the recent sharing of a city grant with the sheriff to take some of our money and share it with him, they like that. So we're, once again, glass half full, glass half empty, not nearly enough, but I think if more resources do come into that pipeline, we're going to be in a position, because of the relationships that the mayor, Cindy Misakowski, who took the trip with us last year, certainly our advocacy on this, and the amount of time that myself, Chief McDonald, Chief Miller, we're constantly back and forth to Washington to keep our faces in front of their faces, it's going to pay off in the long run.
Well, that's good. I hope you're right, but I hope they pay up in the long run. And the data that I have from the last two-plus years is that this administration is simply not interested in actually spending hard dollars on our major cities. One more question for you on the DNA issue, which I know that you care an awful lot about. We now are making strides, SID is making strides, has all but cleared the backlog. At least, that's the latest report we got, or at least they're on track to clear the backlog in this year of untested sexual assault evidence, which is a dramatic change from this time from last summer. But now that we're clearing the backlog, we're getting some hits. And under the Cold Hit Program, we've gotten some hits. I think it's really important for the department to do what it can to put officers and detectives onto those hits. Because as bad as it is to tell a victim of a sexual assault, "We haven't tested your evidence," which this department had been doing for years, and then it was actually destroying the evidence, it's almost as bad to say, "We've tested and we've got a hit, and as soon as we can find a detective in the next couple of months, we'll get on it." What can you tell us about that?
There are actually three initiatives underway that may help to deal with that problem. As part of the ongoing reorganization of the Detective Bureau, one of the initiatives that we're moving forward with is to take the area sex tables, the detectives, too few, assigned to each area, and moving them into a bureau configuration. And we are going to certainly evaluate, is that a more effective way to operate? And the belief is that will increase the number of personnel that can work in a coordinated fashion, and that may, we hope, address that issue as one of the many we're trying to deal with. We have a second pilot initiative that we're looking at that has been, in the process being developed, to take three of our areas and for a variety of purposes, both in terms of the paperwork, the configuration of detective tables, how we staff our patrol functions. That's one that we're looking very closely at, the proposal at this time. There's a third proposal, as recently as last week, Chief Paesinger is proposing to take one of his five take one of his five areas, and he's going to be discussing with Chief McDonald to try another prototype in that area. I know it's very vexing within the department, a lot of people are concerned about all this change all happening too fast, but it's reflective of the fact that if something's not working, let's try something else, let's keep experimenting. And so we've got three initiatives, all of which may have some impact on the issue you've discussed.
Greg, I appreciate that. I really would encourage you to do everything you can to put some warm detectives on these cold hits, because the hits have been made, we now need to go out and make the arrests. And also, I just want to encourage you to continue your efforts. I know you agree with me that DNA evidence shouldn't be used as sort of the icing on the cake after a detective builds a sexual assault case. It should be tested immediately. We're trying to build the scientific capability to do that, but we need to educate the detectives that this is a tool they should be using at the very outset of their case. That's my view of it, and I assume you share that.
We had, just as a quick one, that at a recent ComStat meeting, a patent had been developing, both within the city as well as a neighboring city. And we recently made an arrest, out of the five that we identified in the patent, there was only DNA left at one. And we were able to take that DNA, we put out a lot of extra resources in our city as well as the neighboring city, and we got a prowler, there was a DNA match on that prowler to the first case, but we're pretty confident that the other four same individual but absent the DNA evidence probably can't make the filings on those four, but we can certainly make it on the first one.
Thank you. Ms. Weiss, last question, then I'll ask you to press your button again.
Thank you, Mr. President. One final question. I do not want to get into a lard discussion here about the Board of Rights issue. You've spoken about that at length, I know you feel passionately about it. As you well know, if there is to be reform there, that's a long, complicated process that one would have to go to. Whether or not there is a major overhaul, in my view, it seems that there are some less major overhauls that are nonetheless really significant issues that I would hope we could address in the near term. Getting better advocacy, ensuring that members of Boards of Rights receive training in how to adjudicate cases, whether they're the civilians or the officers on the Boards of Rights. Bringing in organizations such as the County Bar or other experts in dispute resolution to provide legal training, because I understand that it's not supposed to be the most formal of processes, but it should be a good process. And we ought to, in my view, not just focus on, I know you have a long-term goal in mind that may or may not be something we agree with, it may or may not be something that happens in the short term, I think you need to focus on making those short-term fixes as well, and I would just encourage you to consider that.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll say, like everyone else did, most of my questions have been asked, and, which is why I want to say thank you very much, Chief, for coming here today and giving this presentation. Tom, this was a great idea. We never have enough time in a regular council meeting to really delve into the issues of public safety in our city like we should, so this, for me personally, was very valuable. I have also attended a ComStat meeting and found that to be quite impressive, amazing, and really was impressed with the accountability of each division in terms of having the answers to the tough questions that were asked of them publicly in these meetings, and I think that's important. I really appreciate your answers about gang crime. As you know, that's one of the issues I, too, really am so interested in, in several parts of my district, that is a huge problem, and I appreciate that you say, you know, we've done a lot, but we're certainly not where we need to be on that. And as you know, I think, I would like to see the city spend more dollars on a number of resources, but prevention is something I still want us to work together on in terms of reducing these, the membership of the gangs. One of the things, and response time, Greg asked that, that was another issue, I know that our crime stats have gone down, but still in my community, they continually want to know about response time, and I was happy to hear what we're doing to address that in lieu of just having more cops on the street. One thing I just was going to touch on, one more thing I'll say. See, when you get to be the last person to get editorialized, like, because you guys asked all the questions. And by the way, Jack, following in your lead and joining the efforts that you've done for this city, I'm actually traveling back to DC next week to specifically lobby for Homeland Security dollars as it relates to the Port of Los Angeles, because, as you know, that's still an area that has been extremely underfunded.
We'll give you some names and doors to knock.
Good, I, that's what I want to do, too, because that still is such a vulnerable area in the city of Los Angeles. But I hope, as we go through these tough budget times and we make these tough budget choices, I just want to encourage you, Chief, to come to us and ask us for what you need. Come to us and ask us for what it is.
Be careful what you wish for.
Yeah, that's right. That's okay, because I think the day is going to come, and I'm hoping we're moving closer to it of having a zero-based budget, where we decide that public safety is our priority and we fund that, and everything else comes second. And not only do we fund it, we work to increase it. And that's something I know that I'm going to continue to fight for. I will touch on one other thing that I'd like to hear more about, and it goes a lot with the comment of doing better is not good enough, where we are is not where we need to be, and it's about the relationships with the community. And clearly, I agree, I think this department has turned the corner in terms of the relationships with the community. And ultimately, that comes back to help you and us, as we saw in Watts, when we had the community come forward and help us solve a crime a few hours after it happened. The town hall meetings you had were excellent, and the extra time you spent in San Pedro was, I think, will go a long way to improving this relationship. But what will you do in the future? What specific things can you do in the future to not just have turned the corner, but continue to improve those relationships with the community? As I know you heard in the Harbor area, some of our communities gets very attached to commanding officers, only to find them promoted or moving along in their own career track. So what are you doing to continue specifically to improve those relationships in the community so that they're really longstanding and we never go back to the way it was before?
A number of things. One, in terms of personally spending a lot of time in those environments, whether it be last night at the town hall meeting with Councilman Viegosa over in Hollenbeck. Last night, if you just think about it, off the top of my head, that Chief Papa was with Rose Ochi at a community meeting, reference to the community meeting that Jack Weiss and others attended up in Hollywood. In any given night around the city, and you know it, because you're out at them every night, the police are intimately involved in those meetings. The Senior Lead Officer Program that was reinstituted is still a phenomenal program. Good news through the Police Foundation that the money is going to be provided to buy 200 of these BlackBerry email telephones, with all costs provided by the Police Foundation. So slows will not only have cell phones, but they'll have email capacity at the same time. So the partnerships that we're talking about continue to expand, because we're very aggressive in seeking to expand them. We are a department that is very proud of ourselves, but we're also very cognizant of our deficiencies, deficiencies in terms of resources and deficiencies in terms of relationships in the past years. So I think you're correct, I think we have turned a corner. And even the Police League, that many of them are in the room here, at many of these community meetings, you'll oftentimes see a league representative in that room, which I think is, in my 30 years of experience, I've never seen a union come to community meetings, because they want to be there, they want to be involved. So I think that's another theme that's going on here in Los Angeles that is unique and is a positive sign.
Mr. Cardenas.
Let's see, what hasn't been said? Well, being someone who grew up and represents the San Fernando Valley, I was extremely alarmed at the chart that showed the per mile number of officers that we have, and the fact that we were at the bottom of that list, it's truly alarming. Yet, at the same time, until we can get more officers, period, because that's obviously part of the problem, what can or what are we doing within the force to change deployment, looking at that component? I know you have many components to look at, but is that component playing some part in our deployment? How sparse some areas are when it comes to mileage?
Yeah, one thing we're looking at is, the chief mentioned earlier, the level of specialization within the department, whereas in the past, and we became a model for around the country, if you had a problem, you had a task force to address it. If it was a bigger problem, became a unit, and then a section, and then eventually a division, focused on one particular thing. And I think we became too compartmentalized, where we were specialists to a fault. And I think what we need to do, and we are doing, is taking a step back and looking, how do we become more generalist? And how do we handle the big picture, whether it's broken down by geography, we talk about the territorial imperative, but being responsible for this area, for anything that goes on in the area? Because when you become specialized, you focus only on your specialty to the exclusion of other things, and you just, you know, shine that as, that's someone else's job. And we need to move back to that, we don't have the people to be able to do that. We need to become general practitioners and address the overall health of the community and not just a portion of it.
How is the department, how does it feel or how is it experiencing the activity and support of the community across the board, certainly in some of our more troubled neighborhoods, where when a crime goes down, in the past, we haven't really had much cooperation, the number of phone calls and the cooperation was really dismal, quite frankly. Is that improving?
Let me just start on that, and I'll ask Jimmy to add to it, because he's out in the field as much as I. I think we've begun to turn a corner on that issue. In the last month, easily a half dozen instances in which residents of this city have either directly got involved, in one instance, we had a young man who witnessed a shooting, followed the gang bangers, got in his cellphone, I was listening to it on my car radio responding to the scene, and made an arrest, literally within five minutes of the shooting. Another instance, two immigrant workers, day laborers, sitting at a trolley stop, witnessed a double murder, followed the two individuals, a 13-year-old and a 15-year-old, for blocks to the house that they went into, then went to the local police station, reported it, and I might indicate that these are illegal immigrants, undocumented, who reported this to the police, took the police back to the house, and just as the police arrived, the two individuals, the 13 and 15-year-old, who now changed their clothes, changed their hairstyles, were exiting the house, we made an arrest. That, there's something happening that's good news in the city right now, that people are willing to get involved, both anonymously, and in some instances, coming forward and being willing to work with us. Beginning to turn a corner, but it's critical. And so some of the improved homicide clearances I talked about, some of that's directly reflective of, one, homicides are down by almost 25%, so detectives have more time to work on the remaining homicides, but, two, we're getting much better cooperation.
So without a doubt, Chief, we definitely need more officers, there's no question. Our numbers are just, in every category, just not where they need to be. Yet, at the same time, if we, as Angelinos, want to improve the quality of our life in general when it comes to public safety, we need to see more examples like the ones that you just recounted, and the one that we experienced, you were with us when we made the announcement that the person who apprehended that 13-year-old girl in the valley, that that same day, they had apprehended him, and there was cooperation with local businesses, many phone calls came in, and he was apprehended, and as of this time, apparently admitted to the crime. So to improve our quality of life, it's not just about the men and women in badges, it truly is about a relationship between the citizenry and our public servants, such as our officers, correct?
It's actually three things. It's more police, I think certainly the increase in the department in the last several years, and they are being re-energized, getting back into the field, increased arrests, that has been a significant contributor. Two, community support and involvement, absolutely essential. And thirdly, tools to work with, laws that are useful, whether it's the laws to deal with drag races, or the laws to deal with prostitutes, or more significant insane laws to deal with the gun violence. Those three things together are the magic equation, if you will. Most significant, probably, in the near term, certainly more police, and the idea is arrests go up, but the experience in New York has been, over time, the arrests go up, but then they go down. And then, over time, as New York has been able to do, New York has reduced, it increased its police force to 41,000, it's now down around 36,000 or 37,000, but what's happening? Crime continues to go down, with the single exception of homicides, which went up slightly this year, with a police force that's now been reduced by over 4,000 officers. The Rikers prison population, which was at a peak of 22,000, I was there as chief, now averages around 14,000. So they have 2,000 fewer corrections offices, they need fewer probation parole offices, because it's a bell curve. You're going to have an increase, but then, over time, you can have a decrease in all the other areas.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it, and that last point that you just made about the third item, about having the right kind of laws, I appreciate that challenge, because this is the body in which we make those laws, so we look forward to that challenge and that partnership. My last question or point to be made has to do with, do you, do you break down your, and monitor the resources that you get financially from, for example, General Fund, which, in my opinion, is the most solid, ongoing funding that you can depend on? And then also the kinds of grants, unfortunately, that we've been depending on from other levels of government, whether it's Washington or Sacramento, where those grants could stop? Actually, they could stop in midstream, in the middle of a fiscal year, but nonetheless, they could stop come July 1st.
We have been fortunate that we've been very aggressive in seeking both state and federal funds, and actually, the dilemma the council now finds itself in is, and you have a meeting later today, on the issue of, we've been very successful in getting federal funds, cops' funds for more cops, now you have to match it up against the city's need to match those funds with city resources. I'm feeling very comfortable that we have made significant inroads into the federal government, both in the cops' office, Office of Homeland Defense, which are the two pots of money that we, the police, rely most heavily on from outside grants. Everybody wants to be associated with a winner, and I think right now, the federal government is seeing in Los Angeles that there are some things going on here they want to be associated with, whether it's what Mr. Miller and Commander Leep are doing with terrorism, what we're doing with the consent decree. Federal government actually is encouraging other areas that are going into consent decrees to come to Los Angeles to learn from our experience. And thirdly, in the area of gangs, we've made it quite clear that we are quite willing to be the national laboratory for experimenting with new initiatives, and they've been showing some willingness to fund those.
Well, one of the things that I'd like to encourage you, Chief, and your department, is to please remind us as the council what kinds of funding you feel comfortable with, and in any way that we can help you, yet at the same time, warn us, where we've been depending wholeheartedly on this particular funding for this wonderful program that's successful, yet at the same time, it may be in jeopardy, and we may have to look elsewhere for those funds.
Well, this year, when we come back, I'll knock on the door rather than using a battering ma'am, as I tried to do last year, that we'll learn from last year's experience. Okay?
Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, one of the things you started out with that I thought was important, where you talked about the need to be able to hire civilians, and I think with what the Budget and Finance Committee did last week when we looked at our serious budget crisis, but we did say, I think thanks to Chief Gaskin, who's been working on this for a long time, give us the unfreeze in those civilian positions, so we don't have officers answering the phone and doing filing and doing important things, but we have, give you the latitude that I think you're looking for. We've done that, and I think the second thing we're recommending is dovetails with that, to say in your acknowledgement and awareness of sort of bureaucratic heaviness there, that as a consequence of that, that the department is going to make serious efforts to take some of those mid-level bureaucracies, streamline them, deal with them as a consequence, give you the freedom to hire at the levels of people who really do the job, and again, free police officers. So I think we're, we heard that loud and clear. I must say, I was a bit surprised with your answer to Councilmember Smith, saying what was the number-one thing you would change, and you said get the consent decree. I thought it would have been the civilian unfreeze, and I think we're close, because the truth is, however, when we get out of the consent decree, hopefully, the department will have training and systems in place to maintain and manage the kind of issues that got us into the consent decree in the first place. So it's not going to all go away, hopefully, the federal government will go away, the monitor will go away, but the department will then have internally the audits, the management, the Professional Services Bureau, systems to make sure, teams, too, the other things to make sure, that you have the best tools and techniques available to make sure you're managing the department well. The third area I want to talk about just briefly and get a little more response is, I think as a consequence of crime reduction relating a little bit to terrorism, I think it was Chief Bergman who said maybe two years ago, the most significant terrorist threat we face in this city is the local gang terrorist in our neighborhoods. There's no question, that's number one. That's why Chief Hillman with the Gang Impact Team is critical, and I guess... I guess I'd like to ask you to answer just a little bit, how you believe ComStat is going to help give the availability to the gang impact teams and the coordination of the narcotics teams and narcotics detectives, really pulling that together, dealing with narcotics crimes, dealing with homicides in the gang communities, and dealing with that overall view that you need. And then, secondly, I think just to comment a little bit about what Councilmember Ludlow said, the truth is, we can't ask LAPD to do it all. What we've got to do, and I think what might be a partnership to what Mr. Labonge asked today, which is what you're providing, is to have, maybe coincident with your gang summits and the conferences that you're going to have at the federal level, is to have the city follow-up with you in whether, what programs we put out there. We put LA Bridges out there and help fund that, both with federal grant money and city money. We put LA Best out there. We put Operations Healthy Neighborhoods out there. We put Class Parks out there. Those were city funding efforts, not police dominant, but saying, we need to do more. We need to deal with intervention at kids at middle school level, after-school programs. We need to have our parks be places where kids and families can come and play. So what we need to do is work with you in your planning the conference, to really also line out what we were doing at the city level, what we need to do more of, and also, if those are other areas where funding is going to be curtailed, or we have less flexibility of city monies, how we can best use those resources together. So just as you have perhaps some compartmentalization and specialties within the department, so too, the city tried a number of special different programs, some of which are working, some of which may be in trouble, but we've got to bring those together so that we can be more effective. And I guess let me just leave it, asking you to talk about how you see ComStat and the gang impact teams working to really get down to what I think Councilmember Reyes has asked for a different time, and that is, how are we dealing with deployment? What are we doing? How do we give you the tools that you can respond in the best way necessary when you see issues arising out of ComStat in terms of effective policing?
Thing to understand about ComStat is that it's an evolutionary process. It's a management system that, for a department like LA, which is so small, it's probably even more critical than it was in a much larger department like New York, because it does allow us to identify emerging patterns and trends much more quickly. With as few resources as we have, it does allow us to respond more quickly to that identified trend. And let me give you just one example of how it would work. That Chief Hillman, for example, who's the overall city coordinator of gang initiatives, while each bureau chief in each area is responsible for their particular geographic area of responsibility, Chief Hillman, Chief McDonald have the city responsibility. It was identified in a Hollywood ComStat that they've been having problems at night, Friday and Saturday in particular, with a new element in the neighborhood, which they had begun to identify as gang bangers coming from the South Bureau. In the old days, we would have been focused only entirely on Hollywood. But Chief Hillman quickly put together an initiative with Chief Paesinger, Chief Carter, that we have a process now where gang unit members on a Friday and Saturday night will be going to Hollywood in the early evening to help the Hollywood gang members identify who are these characters that are up there raising hell. But as importantly, two, three o'clock in the morning when they finish up there, and then go back and start shooting up the South Bureau, we've already identified, what are they driving, what are they wearing, so that when we get the description that we're looking for, a red Toyota, well, two hours earlier, we were up in Hollywood, red Toyota, registered to so-and-so, so we have a shooting, and we're sitting at his home, waiting for him to drive up after he's done the shooting. So ComStat is just a way of coordinating this huge city with the limited resources. The $2 million federal grant that you'll be looking at, and hopefully, we'll be in a position for approval, will allow, through computerization, a lot more decisionary information like that, instead of us trying to spot it visually. The computer will do it for us. So the ComStat process works in that fashion. But more importantly, its evolution will be coordination with the surrounding cities, and certainly with the sheriff, and the sheriff will be eventually assigning his station commanders to sit at our ComStat meetings. We'll have probation parole there. And as you've already seen, the open invitation you have, it allows you, as a council member, or your staff people, who are always welcome, to come in and see, in a transparent fashion, what are we doing, and then, understanding how we're operating, then making recommendations, exactly as you're pointing out, how do we ensure that what the police are doing can blend and meld more with some of the initiatives that you're designing and supporting here in council? So it's really an opportunity for us all to work more closely together, because nobody in the city, no department, has sufficient resources to do it by itself. And so it's an even more desperate need that you, as a council, creatively find ways that we, as department heads, can work more creatively together.
Thank you. I really appreciate particularly that demonstration of an effective way in which ComStat works across bureaus, but because of the gang intervention team is able to pull together the resources to know something in one neighborhood that's affecting something miles away, even in another bureau, and how much more effective it is today than in the patterns that were established in the past. And one, I too, just would like to thank you very much for this overview. I think the next focus should be, with your planning of the gang conference nationally, that will be held here, to really spend some time with the council, with our other city departments, and with the mayor, so that we can have an auxiliary support team to you, so that you're dealing with the law enforcement agencies around the country. We can have perhaps at the same time, or interacting with you, our other city agencies that are dealing with it, from the grant programs, with LA Bridges, with the after-school programs, I've actually been inviting LA Unified here as well, because I think that's the other key, not asking you to do it all alone, on your shoulders, however much more effectively they're going to be, but really saying it's going to be broadly interconnected, and that's where it's got to be in the future. So thank you very, very much for this presentation. We really look forward to that conference and the ideas that can come from it.
Mr. Madrigosa.
Mr. President, members, I've listened intently to many of the questions that our members have had with respect to this presentation. And the one part of the slide that continues to stand there like the big elephant in the room is that we're doing better is not good enough. You know, there's, I think, agreement here on the council that we need to do more to make sure that our civilians are doing more of the work that our officers are doing currently. We need to do everything we can to move in that direction. We need to engage, I think, in some of the work that Ms. Hahn has talked about in terms of performance and financial audits, to make sure that this department and every department is squeezing blood out of a turnip, if you will. But the big elephant in the room, members, is the fact that the federal government has stepped forward, and they've said that they're willing to provide us with $20 million over the next three years. And we have said that we intend to accept that $20 million, but we really haven't done anything concrete to move in the direction of not only accepting the money in concept, but doing everything we can to embrace it and put the police officers on the street over the next four years, so that doing better is not good enough, and we can get where we aspire to be. You know, there have been, over the last year, many discussions and debates about what we need to do to make this city safer. I dare say, the one thing we agree on is that we need to put more police officers on the streets of the city of Los Angeles. We need to do other things, make no mistake about it. I'm a big believer that it's not just cops, it's after-school programs, it's jobs, it's a panoply of strategies that I think Ms. Misakowski spoke to, and many of us have spoken to in the past. But it does start with more police officers, members. And so as we kind of take in today's discussion, I think we need to start moving in the direction of not just in the air, accepting the idea that, yes, we're going to draw down this money, we're going to move in the direction, but do the concrete things that we have to do to do that. That means, as we've said a number of times over the last few weeks, looking at every department, and identifying where we could squeeze that blood out of the turnip, looking at this department as well, in terms of the civilian folks who are doing what police, in terms of the police officers doing what civilians could do. But ultimately, it's going to mean biting the bullet. It's going to mean all of us doing what we have to do to take advantage of the progress that we've seen in fighting crime over the last year, and making sure that we can build on that and address the most important responsibility that we have as a city, and that is to make this city safer. So thank you, Chief, for your presentation. Thanks to all of you for being here today. I enjoyed the discussion, I think we all did. It was very fruitful. But ultimately, this is going to be about what we do concretely and specifically to put more police officers on the streets of Los Angeles.
Mr. Labonge.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I believe that has everyone spoken. I thank you, Alex, for your coordination. Sidney, I thank you and your committee for all your work and your staff, and Chief. I thank you, and I congratulate you on your one-year city service. You know, 222 years ago, 44 people walked nine miles from Mission San Gabriel to the banks of the river to start this city. And if you look at what's being passed around right now, it's a listing of the ratio of population to the number of sworn officers at any one time. And from 1920, with a population of over a half a million people, there was only 674 officers. And one of them was Thomas Joseph Lernerhan, my grandfather. And then through the '30s, and the '40s, and the '50s. And historically, what I'm showing you, and members, is we, this council, has always said, let's try to do the best we can for this city. And that's what they were able to do. But I want to just say, we've got to do better. We've got to do better and find a way to pull magic out of a hat. We've got to do better with all our departments, as Antonio just eloquently spoke of, of trying to maximize it for the community. We've got to do better, because never have we ever been committed to having that model of what we want in Los Angeles, what we want for the LAPD. And I think we have to dream as architects. And as Frank Gehry, who developed the Disney Hall, and he met with Lillian Disney before her death, he explained, that's a flower. And Lillian loved that, because it really is a flower. And if you go to the top of this city hall and look to First and Hope, you'll see that flower there, and especially with the illumination of light. Well, we have to develop a strong flower, if I could use that term, that is, the Los Angeles Police Department, that really glows and grows within all parts of the community, and has the staffing and the ability to serve. Where I was with Sharon Papa last night, at the Founder's Church at 6th and New Hampshire, where the people really welcomed her and Captain Beck and the senior lead officers from Rampart, to engage with community about the problems of life in that area. I just think it's real important that we took the time, Mr. President. I thank you again, in the two hours, and articulated what you see right now as the chief of police, and more that will take place, and what we have to do to try to move that agenda along. Because at the end of the day, it's public safety is number one. Public safety is number one in every neighborhood. When my mother lived, I would call her, and I'd tell her, don't go out to shop at the Ralphs, this was before the strike, the Ralphs at Santa Monica and Vermont, after four o'clock. That's what I started with the city in the 1970s. And then I would move it consecutively up to, don't go out afternoon, to Santa Monica and Vermont, because fear of some kind of problem, of someone preying on an older person, what a horrible thing. So I just want to thank everybody, and hope that we see that, and hope in our own minds, we could think of, okay, it's always a struggle, it's always bad times. I remember, you could see the dip on this chart here, from, and I started in '76, when Proposition 13 came, and they had to lower the number of officers that they had allotted to. There's always been a dip. Now, we may go through some tough times, but I think we have to see what we want and then build from it. See what we want in all areas, and not just sword, but in civilianization, and in other departments, and in relationships to other departments. So Chief Bratton, Chief McDonald, all the members of the LAPD who are here today, and all council members and their staffs, I just want to thank you, because it truly was, when I first got here, and Jan Perry adjourned in memory of a teenager who died in her district at a park to a bullet, and I was sitting next to you, Sidney, before we moved over there and you came back, and we talked about this almost two years ago, of having this discussion on the importance of the issues related to the Los Angeles Police Department, how we serve. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. We also have Mr. Garcetti, ready to be heard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to say anything, but I'll say something very briefly, because Tommy made me think of something. We look back in history, and we look at the police rate, and that was a great handout that you had. One of the things that people overlook when we talk about being, for instance, the murder capital of the country last year, was the murder rate in our history. In 1853, I think, we had about one murder a day. When we had about 3,000 people, we'd have to have about 2,000 times the murder rate today to match that. Throughout California, we had a murder rate of about 50 times that in Washington, DC today. Gives you pause and makes you realize, this city has come a long, long way. And I just want to say one other thing in closing, because I've just been listening, and we need more officers in the city. We need more prevention programs in the city. If we can do those two things here, and we've had such strong voices articulating that, we will be able to not only see 5% reductions, we will be able to see double-digit reductions. And I hope that as we look at motion that Mr. Padilla and I introduced, and moving forward in the coming month or so, at a possible ballot initiative, that we have an opening right now, where all of our communities are saying with one voice, give us more, we want to support them. Janice Hahn's Neighborhood News confirmed that. I was just reading, throughout the city, no matter what the neighborhood, let's put it there, and let's continue that momentum, more officers, and some more money for prevention as well. Thanks.
I was wishing to offer some final comments. If not, then thank you very much, Chief, and your entire staff, for your time and your presentation today. I believe we can receive and file this report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madame Clark, next item, please.
Just asked the chief to send us a copy of what he provided as slides today. I think that was useful information.
We'd be more than happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madame Clark.
Mr. President, there's a special one that has been distributed to the council members, moved by Councilmembers Zine, seconded by Councilmembers Labonge and Smith. City Attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, wildfires have encroached upon the communities of Chatsworth and Porter Ranch. Immediate action is required for the council to impress upon the Department of Recreation and Parks its concern that parks in the vicinity be closed due to the high fire danger. Pursuant to the government code, council must first determine whether there is a need to take immediate action, and that the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of today's agenda. If such a finding is made, council may then consider the substantive motion.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Anybody wishing to be heard on the findings? Mr. Zine, on the findings? On the findings, okay. If not, if we can open the roll on the findings, close the roll and to populate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Okay, special one is before us. I'd like to recognize Mr. Zine first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This came to my attention after the fires broke out, and the concern is people going into the areas for a variety of reasons, not for entertainment in the park, but basically to view activities that emergency personnel are involved with. And the Wrexham Parks, the Rangers, other personnel, need to secure those areas, and this will give the general manager of Wrexham Parks the ability to secure an area, and not have to deal with the removal of people, searching for people who may venture into those areas that are on the borders of our mountain fire district. This is a request that we approve. We give the general manager of Wrexham Parks the ability, the authority, if they see fit, along with the cooperation of the LA City Fire Chief. An area is in jeopardy. It stands in the way of a problem with a fire. We don't know when these fires are going to be over, when they may continue again. But it secures our parks, secures those locations, and gives the authority that Wrexham Parks General Manager needs to carry out the safety within that environment. This would be in coordination with Wrexham Parks General Manager and the Fire Chief from the city of Los Angeles. And the general manager is with us this afternoon to discuss any reasons or any questions we may have, and I would urge an aye vote, so they can have the authority to close these areas down when necessary for the protection of life and property in the parks throughout, not only the San Fernando Valley, but other areas that may be impacted by fires. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Padilla.
I just want to thank Mr. Zine for bringing this motion in. Obviously, it's a pertinent issue, given... Obviously, it's a pertinent issue given what's going on all around the city of Los Angeles and especially out in the northwest, San Fernando Valley. My quick question, because Mr. Zine almost didn't allow this motion to be brought in. My question to the General Manager is, I had just assumed that you have this authority or you have the ability to exercise your discretion as to when you could or should close parks due to public safety risks. Can you speak to that?
Yes. The General Manager of Recreation and Parks does have the authority to close parks down during an emergency situation. Because of the particular situation that we're faced with right now with these tremendous fires in the hillsides, I really feel that by the city council taking a more formal action, it makes it much easier for us to invoke that type of authority. For example, yesterday, I took it upon myself to close Chatsworth Park because the flames were over on the hillside. One of the things that we did discover, though, after we closed the park down, which we thought was a fairly simple action, we discovered that there were probably in the neighborhood about 24 automobiles parked in our parking lot. We started questioning people, questioning our staff, what these vehicles were doing there, and we discovered that they were hikers, people going up into the mountains so they can get a better viewing of the fire. So, we ended up having to not only evacuate our staff, but then also get the help of the Los Angeles Police Department, Fire Department, the sheriffs, to get these individuals out. So, a council, council taking a more formal action really aids me in being able to close parks and allow the public to, or at least give the public a good justification for doing so.
So, thank you. And the reason I ask the question, colleagues, there's a couple. Number one, every motion that we introduce during a council meeting costs money. Costs money to open up a council file, their staff that needs to process it, it's referred, it's, you know, it costs money to administer all of that. Second, probably more importantly, you know, it would be a big concern for me if you need council approval to do what you just explained to us. Heaven forbid a fire or some other emergency-type incident occurred on a Friday afternoon or a Saturday when we don't have a council meeting until Tuesday. Does that mean your hands are tied in that interim period? If we need to change the rules and the procedures of the city, including the charter, to give you the authority to exercise it in those instances, then let's do that so that we don't have to, A, go through a costly process to give you that authority and flexibility, or, second, just clarify it because, hey, you're a General Manager and you do what you feel is necessary to do. We hired you for that judgment and we hold you accountable for your decisions. So, again, I just wanted to point that out. If there's something that we need to change, then please let us know. Mr. City Attorney, please let us know. But otherwise, if that's not the case, then, you know, colleagues, I just ask that we be a little bit more prudent in when we need to introduce motions because it's necessary versus we're just trying to be helpful and understand the difference.
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you.
Mr. Lavangé.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. Zine, Mr. Molinado. On the issue here, and I know the Fire Chief is engaged with activities, but I, with this discussion here, on the weekend, I did visit fire stations and had discussions specifically about barbecuing, like on last Sunday in Griffith Park. Is it legal or not to even barbecue on a high-hazard day, on a red flag day? Because often families come to the wonderful Great Expanse and barbecue in the right areas, but still with wind or whatever challenges that there are, how's that, you know, relate? And also, the other matters, and I think it's real important, I wish the Fire Chief was here on this here, because we did send a large contingent of our firefighters out of the city to help San Bernardino and Riverside, San Diego and Seamea, throughout the mutual aid, which I greatly support. But also, another thing that was interesting, which I found out when I visited my local stations, is some of the fire companies from the hillside brush areas go to these fires, yet their expertise, and I say this in all compliment, any fire company could find the intersection of Pico and Vermont. Real simple. But can they find the intersection of Dundee Drive and Woking Way adjacent to Griffith Park in the hillside area? Or some of the challenges in some of the Santa Monica Mountains hills, which are so narrow on that, and the issue of moving companies out? So, I do want to talk to the Fire Chief about that, and I think we should have a discussion how that takes place so that makes sure that the local neighborhoods don't lose their resource. On this issue specifically, as it relates to this, I think it should be the General Manager's call with the Chief Ranger, working with the Incident Commander, to say this has become a problem. I do not want to see us lock down parks because a lot of people have no place to go but to a park often. But in the hillside areas where there's no patrol, I think it's a needed measure. You use the discretion, which I know you will use it wisely, but to make sure you consult with the Chief Engineer of the Fire Department. So, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lavangé. And just by way of a quick announcement, there's been a number of members seeking to ask questions, maybe ask for reports or introduce motions relative to our city Fire Department's involvement with the fires around the general Los Angeles area. I think it's, nobody would object to us waiting to have that conversation until it dies down a little bit because we do have a lot of personnel literally on the line, on the scenes. We don't want to tie them up here in council or in a committee until we're a little bit more in the clear and then have, till the review after the fact. Ms. Gruel, followed by Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to rise in support of this, but also for those of the individuals that are listening or watching at this point, if you were listening to KFWB this morning, they said that the Fire Department had particularly been inundated with calls to 911 inappropriately, that people on this fire were trying to get information, not to report a fire, but to find out what was happening. So, I just wanted to use this opportunity to educate people. Please don't call 911 unless it is an utmost urgency and emergency in the neighborhoods. You can call 311, call other phone numbers, but please don't call 911. And again, they were saying that on KFWB this morning, so I just wanted to alert people as well. 911 is for emergency purposes only. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Yes, your comments, Mr. President, made me think about the fire situation, but there are other emergency situations that occur. And I wanted to make this broad where you would have the authority, the jurisdiction, and not have to question if it's a police nature, if it's another nature. That appropriate department, in this case, it's the Fire Department. It may be a law enforcement situation where you need to work in cooperation with the Police Department. And I know how the looky-loos oftentimes get in the way. People are curious if they want to sit home and watch it on television, but sometimes they want to get to that location. We want to give you the authority, the ability to maintain safety for your personnel as well as the general public in those areas. And I'd like this, and I don't know if the City Attorney can give me direction, how we can make this all-inclusive for any and all emergencies and not just limit it, as the discussion has been to this point, just for fires, that any emergency that takes place where the General Manager would then move forward.
For the purpose of this motion, it should be just limited to this emergency and save that for another day, agendize that for another...
Okay. The only reason I bring that up is our president mentioned the costs incurred when we do motions, et cetera. So, I thought we all put it in one package. If we can't, then I just want to give you the authority to close down the parks when it's necessary for public safety, period.
And after having discussions with the City Attorney's Office, I feel very comfortable with the authority that I, that the city has given me to take action whenever necessary. I don't, you know, I don't look at using that power capriciously, but whenever it's necessary to preserve, you know, to preserve park resources or keep people from being put into dangerous situations, I do have the authority to close down our facilities and take action in order to quell a situation. I've also had great response and support from the Los Angeles Police Department and the Fire Department. I know the Chief, the Chief of Police spoke earlier, and I would just like to add that in the year that I've been General Manager of Recreation and Parks, I really feel that the Police Department has really done a yeoman's effort as far as supporting us in trying to make the parks safer throughout the entire community. And whenever we've needed help, they have unfailingly come forward and supported us.
So, we asked that on special one, the item before us, will give you the support you need to maintain safety and security.
Sure. And what I would then do is I would report back to the Commission and to the City Council. For example, there was another situation yesterday where we actually closed Camp Sealy, which is a camp that belongs to the city that's located up in the San Bernardino Mountains. We shut that down because that is an extremely dangerous situation right now. We're in, we're worried that we may lose the entire camp, but we've evacuated all of our staff from that facility.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. So, I request an eye vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. And before we vote, I don't see other members wishing to be heard on this item, but we also announce for both the members of the councils clarification and for the general public's understanding, as General Manager of the Department of Recreation and Parks, Mr. Molinado is a member of the Emergency Operations Board and is tuned into those conversations and those decision-making activities. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten aye.
That is approved. Both with please. Next item.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Members, are there any announcements today? Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. We will hold the meeting of the ITGS Committee at, oh, let's say, 2:15 this afternoon.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Other announcements? Mr. Garcetti.
Just a reminder to everybody that tomorrow, we will be meeting not here during the day, but in the evening in Glassell Park at Washington Irving Middle School. We invite members of the public to come for our general meeting tomorrow. We'll have some great neighborhood updates in the area. We'll also be sharing some news about the upcoming LACC campus, the arrival of CTV, which is the first English-language Latino network in the country that'll be located right there in Glassell Park. And we hope that members of the public will come out. It's going to be tomorrow at 6:00 at Washington Irving Middle School on Fletcher, and we invite members of the community there and look forward to seeing folks at the Los Angeles City Council meeting in Glassell Park.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other announcements today, colleagues? If not, do we have adjournings motions? Please rise for adjourning motions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like for us to adjourn our meeting today in memory of Eric Hines, who was a longtime resident and someone who contributed a great deal to the San Pedro community. Eric was only 40 years old when he passed away. Eric entered the Beacon House, which is a well-known recovery and rehabilitation house in San Pedro in 1998. And he tells the story a lot that he came, obviously because of a lifelong addiction to alcohol and drugs. He had previously been living in a cardboard shack by the railroad tracks along Harbor Boulevard in San Pedro before coming to Beacon House. But he was so happy to finally get into a home and have the support of the other men in this home to really turn his life around. And while he was at Beacon House, he was a key volunteer in San Pedro. He served as the president of a sober living house. He was a participant in the local neighborhood watch and was always ready to help other men in their recovery in any way he could. When he died, Eric was proud to have been clean and sober for more than five years, and he had recently been hired to work as a drug and alcohol counselor in Wilmington. According to his friends at Beacon House, Eric was a living example of how successful recovery and treatment programs can be. He's survived by his mother, Dora, two sisters, one brother, as well as hundreds of friends in the San Pedro community and within the Beacon House Association.
Mr. Lavangé.
Thank you. Members, I think we should adjourn in memory of the 14 victims known to date of the tragic fires in Southern California from Ventura County through this county, through San Bernardino Riverside and San Diego County. And Madam Clerk, I will get the names and appropriately call them, but I think we all know that those, all of us who've grown up in Southern California, how difficult times it is in this time of year when you have these type of fires. And we've known them, and this seems so horrifying because of its stories of families in cars trying to make it to a reservoir and not being able to make it to a reservoir, and then all the challenges that have taken their families of this terrible tragedy. So, I ask that we adjourn in memory of the 14 known victims of these tragic Southern California fires that have affected this region the last five days.
Ms. Skouski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask the council to adjourn in the name of Ted Gilmore. Ted was a longtime employee of the Department of Building and Safety, where he worked as a geotechnical engineer. It's interesting to know now that we're looking at the serious issues affecting fires in our hillside, in our brush areas, come winter and come our rainy season, we also know how important our city employees, particularly in the geotechnical side, are to protecting our hillsides, not only for the structures that are going to go in, but also for the people who now live there in terms of things being stable and not falling down. He passed away on October 19th. He is survived by his wife, Vicki, and I think like a true geotechnical engineer, his two daughters, who are named Lassen and Shasta. So, he will be missed. He was a longtime employee and did help protect many, many generations of people who are living now in our hillside communities.
Thank you. Other tributes? Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Request we adjourn in memory of John C. Desmond, passed away October 15th. John C. Desmond was retired lieutenant with the Los Angeles Police Department. Lieutenant Desmond was born New Year's Day, 1950, in Auburn, New York, appointed to the Los Angeles Police Department September 2nd, 1975, and retired September 10th, 2000. Lieutenant Desmond was last assigned to the Reserve Coordination Section. He will be sorely missed by all who knew him. He is survived by his wife, Monica, mother, Georgia, sister Patricia, brothers David, Robert, and James. May John C. Desmond rest in peace.
Other tributes? Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, it's with great sadness that I ask that we adjourn in memory of Pastor Scott Bower, who passed away on Friday, October 24th. He died from an, he suffered from an aneurysm on Wednesday evening in the middle of his sermon on Wednesday night and was taken to the hospital and was in a coma from then until the moment he passed on. Scott Bower was a senior pastor at Church on the Way, the first four-square church of Van Nuys, California, suburb of Los Angeles. He also served as the chairman of the Board of the King's College, an interdenominational institution which trains leaders for the Body of Christ and is located on the Church West Campus. After serving alongside the founding pastor, Jack Hayford, his father-in-law, for nearly 15 years, Dr. Bower officially began leading the congregation as the senior pastor in 1999. He has many notable tributes. Dr. Bower was a leader in his community and throughout the country, and he is survived by his wife, Rebecca, two sons, Brian and Kyle, one daughter, Lindsay, his parents, and two brothers and one sister. Pastor Scott Bower was a wonderful human being and someone that I would meet with quite frequently. And even though he's a Christian leader, he never pressured me ever about the kinds of decisions that I would make as a city-elected official nor as a state assemblyman. And I always appreciated and respected him for that because he was the kind of person who knew how to put his friendship where it belonged and his leadership and other capacities where it belonged. And he was a true minister in the sense that he loved human beings first and did his job in many capacities very well. We're going to greatly miss him.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I'd just like to also add my extreme sympathy to Scott's family and to his father-in-law, Pastor Jack Hayford. I actually was a member of that church for many, many years, about 25 years ago. I actually remembered when Scott and Vicki got married. And as you said, he never really pressured you on any decision, but I don't know if the other council members received the same letter I did, but we all were just communicated by him thanking us for the bold, courageous stand we took on our earlier lap dancing ordinance. And it is rare, I think, sometimes, that we're asked many times, we're lobbied many times, we're prayed for many times to make the right decisions. But I think in my two and a half years here, it's actually very rare that after a vote, you actually get thanks and you actually have someone who followed it and took the time to thank us for our bold, courageous stand. So, that was really particularly meaningful that Scott took the time to do that for all of us. We will really miss him.
Ms. Skouski.
I would just like to add my words to in tribute. The other thing that he did so well when I represented that district is the Church on the Way was always the place you could go for community events. He had incre- He had incredible spacious rooms there and they were always filled with people of any denomination, but they were of community to do community. I was mentioning to Wendy earlier that when we had a gang summit in the valley about three years ago, it was Church on the Way and Reverend Bauer who opened it up and we had 300 people there. And he actually came first, along with Chief Bergman, to say why and how he thought it was important and why he wanted to open his home to the hospitality of everybody in the valley to solve community problems. So again, it was another hat that he wore proudly and well and never said no when people came to say, "Can we use these facilities to help something make our community better?" And he always said yes.
All members.
Behead it now, thank you.
All members. Mr. Cardenas.
I'd like to add to that. Thank you, Councilwoman Miskowski, for pointing that out. The congregation will continue in good hands and as Jack Hayford said in his Sunday sermon, they are celebrating Scott's life. And that the Church on the Way will continue with all the services that it has been providing and they will continue to grow in the community. And that gang task force has been meeting consistently for all of these years and never once did they miss and those doors have always been open. So they're a strong part of the community and it will continue in good hands and all the activities that they're known for will continue wholeheartedly. And the services, I might add, are, the viewing is happening today from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. and then again from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. tonight at the Church on the Way and then in the west campus. And tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., they will have the final services before burial.
Any final tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned. And again, tomorrow's council meeting will be in the evening in the 13th Council District.